...of the management of Emeryville Services Authority, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bouders?
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue to approve agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none. Public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda, in the jurisdiction of Mesa. You have a comment for the Mesa Board, or do you want to comment at the City Council meeting, Andre?
City Council.
Okay, I'll call you at that time, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. I'll take a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Member Pats to approve consent. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:15. I call to order the City Council as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. Take a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pats, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing none. Public comment for the redevelopment agency consent agenda, seeing none. Consent agenda, motion please.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve consent, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15. We've adjourned the meeting.
We have to wait one minute.
The time is 7:16. Madam Clerk, I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville, regular City Council meeting. Please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion and adjourn the meeting in honor of longtime community member Judy Osir.
Okay, there's a motion by Member Martinez with an amendment to adjourn this meeting in honor of Judy Osir. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Member Martinez, and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda with the qualifications stated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda motion is approved. Special orders of the day, we did that at 6 o'clock. Announcement of commission and committee vacancies, Madam Clerk.
No announcements tonight, thank you.
Okay, council member announcements on meetings attended, or special notices. Member Pats?
None this month.
Member Medina?
Um, none.
Member Martinez?
Nope.
Member Donahue?
No.
I have just a couple. First, I just want to note that one of the community grants that we awarded earlier this year went to the Oakland Ballet Company to provide ballet classes at Emory Unified. And there are two activities I just want to make the community aware of. If you are a participant in the Senior Center, on October 23rd, in the morning, the ballet will be coming to the Senior Center and will be doing a portion of Luna Mexicana, which is their Day of the Dead performance they will do at the Paramount Theater on November 2nd and 3rd. So they will be doing bits of that, and they will be basically offering adult ballet classes and lessons related to dancing to participants at the Senior Center. It's apparently a very well-received program, and they will be doing an open Q&amp;A with the ballet members. So Senior Center participants should go to that. And on November 2nd, they will be doing a brief performance of a portion of the ballet at Emory Unified in the morning as well. So if you wish to, if you're a parent or a student and wish to participate in that and attend, you can do that. I have no other special announcements. I feel like I do, but I will come back. I reserve the right to come back, how about that? So, we'll move on with the agenda. The City Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one announcement. I want to remind everybody about our Harvest Festival that is Saturday, the 27th, at Emeryville Center of Community Life, from 3:30 to 5:30 PM. Games, crafts, photo booths, and for this crowd, a petting zoo.
So appropriate, thank you.
And it's free.
Awesome.
Saturday, the 27th.
Okay. I know what my other special announcement is, that until 8 o'clock this evening, if you came in through a different entrance, there is a shelter dog adoption event downstairs. And if you weren't here from 6 to 7, we honored youth in our community and a couple awesome shelter dog providers. So, thank you for the City Managers' report. Are there ex parte communications for the agenda items this evening? Member Donahue, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Member Martinez?
I don't.
Member Pats?
Uh, no.
Member Medina?
Yes. Regarding item 12.4, I discussed this with Lyft and 1210 consultants. Regarding item 10.4, with Mark Stefan. Regarding item 12.2, received several notes from members of the public. And regarding item 12.5, I spoke with MasterCard.
Okay. And so I, does anyone wish to amend their prior statements?
Yeah, I'm sorry, on 10.4 as well, spoke with the same.
12, 10.4?
10.4, yeah.
10.4, okay. Anyone else?
I did receive emails regarding support for 12.2, the increase of CIP funding for Davenport Park.
Member Donahue?
I did as well.
Okay. I also received the public's communications regarding item 12.2 at Davenport Park. I've had meetings with AC Transit regarding item 12.3. I have had meetings with Jump and Lyft regarding item 12.4. And that's it. Okay, anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll take public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment have three minutes to do so. Mr. Carpio, I know had a, he had asked to come up. Mr. Carpio?
He's got one more.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. And I've been impressed by the love of people who are for their dog. And I have a second thought about it, about if we replace all these animals with homeless, could the homeless be taken care of the same way? They wouldn't mind be taken on leash if we bring them food and lodging and everything, clothing, and at least they've been home, it's still over sidewalk. And so, it's impressive because there is a contradiction there, in which we call the human society for the animal, and perhaps we could call something like prison without wall for the homeless. Maybe you should think about it, but I have another point to do, is that I'm going to run for City Council as a writing candidate, and you too need not to be afraid. All my constituents are homeless, and so they're not Democrat, they're not whatever party, and so they will not affect your standing on the City Council. But I just may come with a bunch of follower there, and they may, they may not be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Sharon Wiltshire.
So, good evening. And it was a beautiful night walking over here tonight, and it was a great night on Friday, the 5th, at the opening of the annual art exhibition. And I just wanted to invite everyone back now to really be able to take a look at the artwork. The show is open every day from 11 to 6, and through the 28th. And last Sunday, we had a poetry writing workshop that was very successful, and this coming Sunday, from 2 to 4, will be poetry reading with four poets, including our former poet laureate. And then just on a, on a separate note, Judy Osir was a member of the Public Art Advisory Committee for many, many years, and I'm really very sorry to hear of her passing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a public comment card from Ron Silberman.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Assistant Mayor Medina. So I wanted to provide a little bit of feedback and some comments on the parking plan that's coming up, and I believe is that you're going to formally meet on the 30th?
Yes.
And I had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Bouders separately, and Vice Mayor Medina. And I sent some emails regarding a survey that I had the owners of the Doyle Street Cafe and the Townhouse provide regarding their employee transportation to work. And it was basically to verify how these individuals came to work. And it was determined that most of them drove their own cars, a few of them car-pooled, no one rode bicycles, and a few of them took public transportation. I don't remember the exact number of employees, but I thought it was very important for you to have this direct information, since most of these individuals are minimum wage earners, and the permit or parking meter process will have a larger impact on them than most white-collar workers in terms of the percentage of their net take-home pay. So I thought it was very important that you look at the numbers of those particular two companies, since they represent some, a significant amount of daytime parking on Doyle Street between 55th and 59th Street. And I don't know what has developed in terms of the number of business parking permits that you will be offering, and also what the actual final rate of any parking meters would be. But I think it's important to take that into consideration. Have, has the, has there been any final determination on any numbers, or do I need to come back to the meeting to?
Yeah, so this is a public comment period. We do not respond to your comment at this time, because it's not an agendized item. So you can raise any issues-
So it was informational only, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with me after speaking with these different property owners and individuals that work in those businesses.
Thank you, Ron. And what I would encourage you to do, if you have that hard data, and Joe, I see you here as well, City Manager is right over here, and she is going to be working with the council and the staff in preparation for that October 30th meeting, and subsequent to that, with the types of data that you've mentioned that we've discussed. So if you have that information, we'd like to share it with the City Manager directly.
Okay, I'll forward the emails that I received from the managers.
That would be excellent. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will close public comment. Members for the consent calendar, I have a request, which is I am recused from items 10.5 and 10.6 due to the proximity of my residence to the subject properties in those two consent items. So if, if you'd humor me, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.4, and then leave the dais briefly for you to deal with those two matters. So I made this motion.
I'll second.
So there's a motion by Mayor Bouders, and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve items 10.1 through 10.4 exclusively. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. And at this time, if you give me a half second and my dog doesn't wake up, I will step down.
There he goes. Oh, okay. I'd like to make, does anyone, I can now entertain a motion for items 10.5 and 10.6?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion from Member Martinez, second from Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Vice Mayor Medina? Aye.
And Mayor Bouders has recused himself from these items.
Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening, so I'll move to item 12, which is action items. The first action item is 12.1, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the purchase of artwork for the city's annual purchase award program entitled silhouette by Emeryville artist Sarah Paloma, with funding of up to $9,400 from the Public Art Fund for the purchase and installation of artwork. Amber.
Thank you for introducing this item. And as we know, I bring these mostly so you can see the pictures. And Sarah Paloma's work is entitled silhouette. She created these particular pieces this year, and there are six individual pieces that range from 10 inches to 25 inches. We will be meeting with the artist tomorrow here at City Hall to talk about where they may be, what kind of pedestal would best suit them, enclosures that would work with it, and if she wants them to all be in one or in more than one configuration. These are just examples of her work. I found this inspiring, that her work is drawn from architecture, geology, beachcombing, ancient history, industrial design, and travel. She's from Cal State Long Beach, she got her degree, and she moved up here and now lives at the 48th Street Co-op. And I think one of the things that's great about the reception that we'll have probably December 13th, so I'm just saying that date out loud because it's not on the presentation, is the ability for these artists to really express their history and how they got to the place and the works they're working with. The alternative, the first alternate is by an individual, I think goes by Leon Park, he may go by another first name. And it's three images converged, three moments of time on the street. The item, this would be considered the senior lounge at ECCL. Because the first artist is prepared for her work to be created, we're not bringing forward a recommendation for this artist's work to be purchased. But he has an interesting history. Unlike many of the artists that are proposed for purchase, he doesn't live here in Emeryville, but rather works at Pixar, and his day job is some of that simulation that we see in Finding Dorian Coco.
He lives on Bay Street.
Oh, so I'm wrong. He's both things. All the better. Much fun. And the Public Art Committee unanimously recommended the purchase of silhouette by Sarah Paloma for installation here at City Hall. There was some concern about if it was placed at ECCL, would the fragility of it be a concern? And so it was specifically recommended for City Hall. And as I said, we'll meet tomorrow to discuss that. The budget doesn't, you're talking about the $4,940,000 that are about installation purchase. There are some other costs that are inherent to the project for a total cost of just over $16,000, though that installation may fall lower than that. And that's just being covered in the Public Art operating budget, which has budgets efficient for that action. So you are asked to take the recommendation of the PAC and commit to this purchase and installation here at City Hall.
Thank you. Members, are there questions for staff? Seeing none. I'm going to open this for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item have three minutes to do so. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back for discussion. Is there discussion? Member Donahue?
I recommend we move forward with the purchase.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
There's a motion by Member Donahue, and a second by Member Martinez to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The resolution is approved 4 to 1. Thank you, Amber. Item 12.2 is consideration of Park and Recreation Committee recommendation for request to increase CIP funding to Davenport Park rehabilitation from $25,000 for improvements up to $150,000 for a new playground and park equipment, fencing, safety, fall material, and site preparation. Pedro.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have a little PowerPoint presentation here of the Davenport Park. A lot of people actually probably don't know where this location's at, so kind of to give a landmark, it's right next to Trader Vic's. I think people will drive by and not know that it's there. Currently, it's very passive, only a couple picnic tables and some benches. There is a stairway that leads into the marina and a view from there. So this process that we've had is, one of the goals that we're given is to look into possible parks and playgrounds, especially on the west side of Emeryville, near the marina. The community reached out to the city for a playground for small children. As I mentioned earlier, it has only some small picnic tables and some moles there right now. The Parks and Rec Committee held several meetings inviting the public to participate, and there was also a community meeting where I believe we had over 50 in attendance, where we discussed ideas and needs. We showed proposals of some examples of playgrounds that could be possible there. There's been surveys taken, that we've had over 160 responses. For all, we kind of looked at Marina, the Davenport Park, and Stanford Park, and all of them come back that there's a need for tot lots, fencing, and rubber safety material as a surfacing. Things we are also looking at is other possible funding, which has been in, looking at a grant with Kaboom or Prop 68. But in the community meeting, I do want to say that there was a, there was a good turnout and demand for a small playground instead of a larger playground, and the goal is to try to get it done sooner than later, since currently there's a lot of, in the petition we received, I think we received over 50 families with small children ages 2 to 5 that live at, near Watergate. Originally, the Davenport Park rehabilitation and the CIP program was supposed to be for rehabbing of landscaping, the stairway and decking in that location, and it only had $25,000 budgeted. The current recommendation includes playground equipment, site preparation, rubber surfacing, fencing, and then also we have the decking and signage and trees and additional landscaping to be added, and repairs needed that would be included from the previous scope of work and a contingency. We did try to see if we can look at fencing through a different vendor and get quotes. Currently, the industry's really busy, and return calls on those have been very limited. But there is possible other savings if we can sub out the work instead of having one vendor do it. But I think it may be in our best interest to deal with one contractor, the way the economy is right now with construction. But that's something we can look into. So this proposal kind of shows a tot lot in the center with, right here, and a swing, T-swing, that's this one right here, on to the side of it, with this all being rubber surfacing, safety material, there would be picnic tables on, and here with additional trees, a lawn area, some benches. This would all be fenced in, long pow, all the way around, with a gate entrance right here to keep the children safe and within the playground, having trash cans and additional picnic tables and trash cans outside of that to accommodate those that aren't going into the playground, and then doing some of the rehab work, whatever, needed with the fencing and decking out towards the, into the marina area. The estimated playground maintenance from staff having to go out there weekly and clean it up, do trash, landscaping, and graffiti, is estimated around $3,000 to $4,000 yearly. Other possible maintenance includes resealing the pouring place rubber, that's estimated at about $1,500 yearly. That, that kind of concludes my report. I can answer any questions.
Okay, at this time, members, do you have questions for Pedro?
No.
There are no questions, thank you, Pedro. This item is open for public comment. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. I have only one comment card, but I will call all non-comment cards after that. The comment card I have is for Mary Farrell.
Hi, I'm Mary Farrell, and I live at Watergate. I put my card in because I didn't see the young families. I'm glad the young families are here, because I just wanted to mention that when I was a young parent, I lived for the little neighborhood park that was near the married-student housing when my son was tiny. And it's really, really going to help our young parents nearby. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mary. Patty Weber.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of all the Watergate families, particularly the ones that are here. And as I started this Watergate Families Group two years ago, and have been advocating for a playground for the past year, there, right now, there are 40 families in the group, and a lot of those families at this point have two kids. And that doesn't include the families that are not in our group, and it also doesn't include the fact that we have a lot of grandparents that have kids that come and are cared for regularly at Watergate. So there is a large number of children at Watergate at this point. And this is, this is new, and with this new development comes the need, the great need of easy access to a playground. At this point, in order to get to a playground, we have to cross, to walk there, we have to cross dangerous intersections and try to get over the railroad tracks, and it's also a long trip in general. Public transportation is an option, but it's also quite an excursion, the transfer Emeryville around buses to get there. So it basically leaves driving, and many of us don't have cars during the day because we're one-car families. So right now, it is a big deal to go to a playground. But as we all know, children need to play for their mental and physical development. I think this is universally accepted at this point. So they should be playing far more regularly than, than we can give them. So basically, our options are to not have our children at playgrounds as regularly as they need to be, or have a great inconvenience to parents trying to get them there. And we're already overstressed trying to make it in the Bay Area. So the more we can do for our families and make life easier for us, the better. Having a playground walking distance, which Davenport Park would be, would be not just great for the children, be great for the families. And I, I also want to just say that it'd be great for the community in general. The, having children who don't get the opportunity to play outside, they don't get the opportunity to run around, they don't get opportunities to make noise, and they go inside and make noise and run around, and this can aggravate your neighbors. So I think the entire community would benefit from this playground. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Woo!
Sounds like she represented the group well. But I have another comment card from Becky Orme.
I, I think Patty summed basically everything up very well, so I don't have very much to add, other than that myself and a lot of the other parents spend a good deal of time when we're trying to play with our children outside. We have a communal lawn, but it's not fenced in, and there's a lot of car traffic, and a lot of people even treat the driveways kind of like a drag strip. So I spend most of the time trying to enjoy with my son, chasing after him, and trying to keep him out of harm's way. And I think it'd just be so nice for the safety of all the little kids to just have a fence, you know, a playground that's a little safer than what we have right now. So beyond just enjoyment and fun and community enrichment and everything, just the safety issue would be addressed a lot, because kids need to play, and they, they're going to be outside either way. But having an actual physical barrier between them and traffic would just do so much for us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And I would like to start with Member Martinez.
I just wanted to ask staff, so we recently changed our budgeting policy for the funds left over from the real property transfer tax. So, Madam City Manager, do you know, like, we would be able to apply any of those overage funds towards this park?
Is this the excess transfer tax we talked about in the committees?
The commercial transfer tax portion, we revised the budget policy, so everything over budget, 50% goes to unfunded liabilities, and 50% goes to projects the City Council chooses.
And so with regard to that 50%, my recollection of the committee's discussion is that we decided to do that on a two-year budget cycle. The fund, there are, there are excess commercial transfer tax funds, as we reported, but the committee's conversation at that point was to delay that till the mid-site, to the two-year budget cycle. I would like to ask Mr. Jimenez, though. My understanding was there were sufficient funds available in the capital program.
Correct. My understanding from finance directors, we have funding.
So, so for purposes of this recommendation, we are funded for this right now?
Thank you. I misread the staff report. When I read, instead of general capital fund, I read general fund. So that, that's where my-
Sorry, every leaf over here.
Yes, thank you for protecting the general fund.
Thank you. Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any other comments that you want to add?
I, I would like to thank the, the neighborhood for coming together. Patricia, I met with over a year ago, I think, to, to discuss this possibility, and I want to thank her for advocating for a park. I think, I, my children are five and seven, but I distinctly remember fearing for their lives on busy streets. And so I, I feel for the families at Watergate, and I want to, the community to be welcoming to families that want to put down roots in Emeryville and commit to, to being here and being part of our community. So I'm, I'm going to be supporting this.
Thank you. Member Pats?
I fully support this. I really appreciate the work the families have done. This has come to Parks and Rec on a committee a few times. I hear about those from a member on that committee. And so I'm really excited that this is actually coming to fruition, and wholeheartedly support this plan.
Thank you, Member Donahue.
I just want to say that this is so clearly in line with our council goals for increasing the ability for families to stay in our city and have it be livable. And the, the proximity to where underserved community is for this kind of family amenity is just so clear. So I'm, I'm very much behind this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I think Emeryville has 1.2 square miles, where we're able to identify a small piece of land that we could have better serve our community for a reasonable price tag that we can take out of the CIP. I feel strongly that it's something we can do, and I really appreciate all the parents coming out all the way across that dangerous intersection from Watergate. Doesn't absolve us from working on that. That's also a separate issue we will continue to work on, so you have access to all of the parks.
Yeah, and I would just add on, I want to thank Patty in particular for inviting me to one of the family, Watergate family groups, which was essentially amazing to watch parents carry on an adult conversation about the logistics of a park and monitor 20 children at one time. It was a feat that I'm, I couldn't do it, let me just put it that way. So I'm grateful to you all for coming out this evening. I know how hard that is for parents to give up on a- up on a weeknight, yes, it is funny back there, I do agree. I support this 100%, I just have a design element question, I'm not sure if I should ask Charlie or Pedro, can you put the slide back up with the design, because I have a safety question? Charlie, is it going to go to the planning commission for design, or would it just be approved, the staff put it together?
No, this would just be a staff approval.
So my only issue is this, it's located essentially between water and a street, which makes it, you know, is a, children aren't the same as dogs, but one of the concerns when we designed dog parks is when you open the entrance to a space, if a person who's coming or going does not latch it closed properly, dogs escape, they get hit by a car, that's a common concern with people who have dogs, and I'm just concerned, the location of this gate, are we proposing, is that black line below it, are we proposing to put a fence barrier between the path and the water so that there's not the possibility the door is ajar and a child just runs out straight down into the water, that's the only concern I had.
The fencing would be on this side of the pathway and the gate opening in, we could look at maybe doing a double gate to have an area so that you can close one gate before you leave out the other one for more safety precautions.
I would just recommend to staff that we contemplate the double gate design, or if not, and it's possible, to just put a fence along the path, on the south side of the path in this image, yeah, that side of the path, just a fence that goes along so that any child who comes out doesn't just literally go across, either getting hit by a bicycle, you know, or going straight down that embankment into the water, that's, those are the only concerns I had, and so we're not approving a design tonight, but that's the feedback I have for staff as a child safety issue, okay?
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have comments?
Scott has a comment.
I just wanted to point out one thing, that I have been swimming at Davenport Park, and the water is the warmest of any place in Emeryville, right there, and it's a gradual slope to get deeper, so the likelihood of drowning is actually less than in most water locations in our city.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
Second.
There's a motion by member Pats and a second by member Martinez to approve this resolution, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders.
Aye, the resolution is approved, and we will build the park, thank you for coming.
You can come back and break this interview for the parking meter.
You're very welcome, thank you for your efforts, and especially to the kid in the back who clapped with the cars, I appreciate that. Crash the cars dude, thank you, all right.
Thank you guys.
All right, now I feel like it's 12 people's bedtimes. Okay, item 12.3 is consideration of the 40th and San Pablo bus hub concept options, and Diana Keena.
First, and then I can talk.
Why don't you just take us to build a park, like, how big are those kids going to be?
They do not go quietly until that.
Good evening, councilmembers, I'm Diana Keena, I'm with this planning division, and this is Thomas Kronmeyer with Community Design and Architecture, and we are going to present about what we were thinking about options for 40th Street. So where is Diana?
A little more into the mic, please Diana.
Okay. We'll have to move this up and down. So we're talking about 40th and San Pablo Bus Hub Draft Concept Options. We'll do an introduction and background, and then Thomas will talk about the options from San Pablo to Adeline and west of San Pablo, and I will tell you about responses and comments so far, and then I'll talk about discussion questions that we hope you can at least start to mull over tonight. So, this project is to redesign 40th Street and a small part of San Pablo Avenue to improve conditions for bus riders, bicyclists, and pedestrians while accommodating drivers. And this is an overall set of draft concepts that aim to reduce bus travel time and make room for bus shelters, other amenities, plantings, and art. The general plan designates the 40th San Pablo area as a major bus hub, and San Pablo Avenue as a transit street, and poor 40th Street as a transit street and a bikeway and for regional retail access. General plan policy calls for amenities to encourage transit use and increase pedestrian comfort around the major bus hub at 40th San Pablo, and that project is included in the Sustainable Transportation Plan, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, and the Capital Improvement Program, that's for this study. And so now I'd like to introduce Thomas to introduce the options.
Thank you Diana, good evening councilmembers, my name is Thomas Kronmeyer with Community Design and Architecture, and I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce Rob Reese with Fair and Peers, the transportation consultant on the CD&amp;A team, and just to round it out, I would like to mention our third team member, which is the engineering firm of Arab, and they will be supporting us when we get to designing the preferred option and fleshing it out as will be presented to you at a later date. So, moving on, I will first present to you the three options that we developed for the bus hub area, which is located between San Pablo Avenue and Adeline Street on 40th, of course. And as a means of introduction, I would like you to consider the three options organized in a way of, an increasing level of modification of existing conditions, that's a good way of thinking about them. And so this one being the first option, it shows the least amount of changes over the existing conditions, as you probably are aware of, there are bus-only lanes along this block today, they would be retained as a means of enhancing the visibility of this area, this plan suggests to paint those bus-only lanes in a red color, and some of you or all of you may be familiar with this, this has been applied, for instance, on Mission Street in San Francisco, it's that type of red paint that we're talking about here. And you see on the northern side that that lane does no longer, in this option, continue to the intersection of San Pablo and 40th, and that is because at that corner where this concept introduces a short section of separated bikeway, which is indicated here with that green painted, in that green painted area, which is paralleled by a stripe buffer with plastic pylons in it. And the reason for this being there is that there are, as you probably all know, there are frequent right turns in this area, and in order to enhance bicycle safety in this option, we introduce this feature, as it combined with a new signal phase will help untangle movements of bicyclists and right-turning vehicles. As far as bicycle safety throughout the remainder of the block is concerned, all this option does is take the charos that currently exist and turn them into these so-called green-backed charos to give them more visibility. And then finally, the tanish crosshatch that you see on the sidewalks is there to indicate that the sidewalk today and under this option serves as both, sidewalk for pedestrian through travel as well as boarding and alighting for transit passengers, and you will see that that looks different in the following options. And then finally, on San Pablo itself, in the upper-left corner on your screen, you see that in front of the liquor store, this option introduces a bulbout, this is in an area where parking currently isn't allowed, and that there are also no right-turning, right-turn movements that are occurring out of this area, and so this helps us to shorten the pedestrian crossing and improve the, this area by also introducing ADA ramps that currently couldn't be constructed in this area other than what already exists. So, and finally, this is called short-term improvements, and as Diana will explain later, that we use this moniker to indicate that if you so chose, this could be, this option could be used as a precursor to one of the two following options, as an initial improvement. So these are the cross-sections associated with this alternative, on the right-hand side, this is cut, the cross-section cuts close through, close to San Pablo, you see on the right-hand side, the short segment of Class 4 bikeway there buffered from the adjacent travel lane that has the bus in it, and right-turn movements on the other side, you just see there's the charo condition, and then closer to Adeline, the cross-section presents itself like this, so there are the bus-only, 12-foot wide bus-only lanes now striped with that red color, and so this is very similar except for the striping improvements to the existing conditions. So moving on to the bus hub option number two, and so the critical difference here within the roadway is that, first of all, the existing median is eliminated and reconfigured into this new median that you see here, and at the same time, the left turn on 40th, the left turn lane, dedicated left turn lane has been removed, and doing so allowed us to redistribute the space within the right-of-way in a way such that bus boarding now occurs on the bus boarding, onto and off the bus boarding area that's indicated here in this tanish color, so you can see the sidewalk no longer provides double duty, and so there's a designated area for the bus boarding and alighting. Secondly, this option introduces a raised bikeway, so with raised bikeway, we mean it is at the same level as the sidewalk, and that is the green area that you see behind the bus boarding area, which slots between sidewalk and bus boarding area. And also introduced by this option is a dedicated right-turn lane off of 40th onto northbound San Pablo, accommodating the already referred to right-turn lanes, right-turn movements that frequently occur at that location. And then the green hatching indicates areas that can be used for streetscape improvements, green infrastructure, which we will look at during the next phase, that's another option, and of course, public art-type improvements could be considered in those areas as well. And the, at the San Pablo, 40th Street intersection, again, the new bulbout on San Pablo shortens that crossing distance, the reconfiguration of the right-of-way on 40th shortens that crosswalk, so there are pedestrian improvements associated with this option along with the bikeway improvements. These are the cross-sections that go with this option, as you can see on the right-hand side, next to the turn lane is a raised Class 4 bikeway that is separated from the sidewalk by some landscaping, on the other side, there's the opportunity for some more significant landscaping in these green-hatched areas that I mentioned previously, and as you can see, bike and sidewalk are at the same level. And this is closer to Adeline, and here you see the cross-section cuts through the bus stop passenger areas which can receive shelters, and not shown here, but I want to make a point of mentioning it, is that the design of this would include some railing system that would be aligned with the back of the shelters, and basically funnel passengers to two crossings onto the boarding area, so that there isn't a 200-foot or 130-foot long area where pedestrians just cross back and forth over the bikeway, so that it will be channelized by using a railing system. Moving on to option three, this option, in addition to the left turn off of 40th onto San Pablo, removes the dedicated left turn lane from 40th onto northbound Adeline, the turn is still allowed, as you can see, there is a straight and left pavement symbol there, but this could be a significant drawback of this option because of the volume of those northbound left turns onto Adeline Street, and that is something that would need to be considered if this option is of interest. And something I failed to point out in describing the previous option, so the previous option and this option have the buses stop in these 11-foot lanes, and so there's one lane left to pass buses that are stopped at these transit island-type boarding areas. So back to describing this option, the remove, the entire, the removal of the median in both turn lanes changes the entire geometry of the street, everything basically straightens out, and so where we had sort of bending conditions in the previous options, that is no longer the case, and as you can see, this area, this option includes significant areas that are hatched in green and provide streetscape opportunities that include a separation, a more significant landscape separation between sidewalk, cycle track, and boarding area, and all other features are very similar to the previous option. So these are the cross-sections, and as you can see on the right-hand side, where it says sidewalk with varies, there's significant opportunity there for streetscape improvements and a separation through landscaping of the raised bikeway and persons traveling along the sidewalk, and then looking at the next cross-section closer to Adeline, again, you can see the boarding area that provides space for shelter, the width is the same as in the previous option, but now we also have more space on the southern, along the southern sidewalk, which pretty much remained unchanged under option two, option three provides significant increase in landscape, landscapable area on the southern side as well. So with that, I would like to move on to describing the options that were developed for the area west of San Pablo, which stretches from San Pablo to just beyond Horton Street. And so in organizing one's thoughts around those options, I think it is helpful to think of the option numbers as providing the key differentiators between the three, and then the sub-options, the AB, that is really limited to particular aspects of the design within the option that I will point out to you, but the key differences are keeping the parking or not keeping the parking, like under options two and three, and the differentiator between two and three is that there's either a transit-only lane on both sides or only in the eastbound direction, and I will describe the sub-options as we get there. Diana, I think you wanted to talk about this.
Yes. Because we're doing a parking management plan, we happen to have a recent survey of parking here, and there are 30 spaces on 40th Street, of which on a weekday at 10:00, 19 are occupied, and within two blocks, that is up to 45th and over to Harlan, there are 72 spaces, so there is room for people to park within two blocks of 40th Street, there are some businesses on the west end of 40th Street that currently people can park within one or two blocks, and if we do this, they'll be parking some of them three or four blocks away, that would be the visitors and the workers.
So just to upfront discuss a few of the concepts involved here, so option one will involve the difference between these two concepts, assuming the parking on the south side of the street, the north side doesn't have any, if the parking were retained, there's two different ways under option one to think about how the cyclists and the parked cars relate to one another. At the top, you see a separated bikeway that is separated from the drive lane by the cars parked to the left of the cyclists, separated by a painted buffer. parked to the left of the cyclists, separated by a painted buffer into which passenger doors would be opening. And this is, I think you're all familiar with, this is the arrangement that you see on Telegraph in Oakland. The other option of arranging this relationship is the more traditional one, which is shown at the bottom, where you see, just for highlight in green, the, what would be a buffered bike lane next to the driver's side of the car and with the buffer separating the cyclists from moving traffic. Another concept that we wanted to show some illustrations about is that practically all of the options that you will see take the approach of guiding the bicyclists behind the passenger boarding area. This is, again, this was one of the key charges of this project to help the city in coming up with options for untangling the conflict that inherently exists between transit vehicles moving down the street and cyclists, which meet time and again because of the stopping of the bus. So you're all familiar with the picture to the left. That is, of course, something that was recently constructed in Emeryville and implemented this concept. And then on the right-hand side, this is an illustration from one of the current best practices, documents that are out there. This is AC Transit's version of doing this. And so that's what you will be seeing in these options. So getting, moving on to option 1A, which is essentially, again, on the left-hand side, you see the south side of the street, which is where the parking currently exists. So the parking under this option is shifted out.
I want to be clear, you've said that twice. Parking is on the north side of 40th Street. Am I wrong on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Diana's saying yes. I just, for the best, yeah. So all the parking, so the north side of the street is on the left?
Yes, I apologize.
Okay.
You're absolutely right. So the parking on the north side is retained and the Class IV bikeway located between the existing curb and the parked cars. On the other side of the street, on the south side, you have a painted buffer with pylon, turning that facility into a separated bikeway. Then when you get to the bus stop, the Emeryville-style, behind the bus stop, raised bikeway kicks in and in order to, and the parking goes away for the length of the bus stop. And on the south side, in order to accommodate this arrangement, we would have to negotiate a five-foot wide easement into that landscaped area that's located in front of the apartment. So that is...
Just at Bridge Court or the entire length of the road?
The entire length of the, of the, well, it is between Emery and the, and beyond Horton, yes.
Well, it's just where there's a bus stop.
Just where the bus stops.
Where there's a bus stop.
Okay.
And there would be, I think, three bus stops on each side. Well, the south side, there'd be three. There'd be one at Horton, one at Hollis, and one at Emery.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to option 1B, and that is, as I pointed out before, this is using the more traditional arrangement that leads to a Class II buffered bike lane. So on the north side of the street, you have the bike lane next to the parked cars. The south side arrangement is the same as in the previous option. And then at the bus stop, both of them are the same. So then moving on to options two and three. And as I pointed out before, so the key design elements that come into play now are a bus-only type facility, which is shown in the upper right. Then lower left is a bikeway located at the roadway grade, which accommodates cycling in both directions. So it's a two-way separated bikeway. And then on the right-hand side, depicted there, is the same type of facility, but again, raised to the level of the sidewalk. And another feature that, to the extent feasible, we would pursue during the next design phase is that all intersections along the bicycle facility would be, would receive what is called a protected intersection type treatment, where pedestrians and cyclists have very clear, and cars have very clear demarcations in terms of pavement treatments and protective islands within the intersection area that separate the different modes. So moving on to 2A and 2B. So under option 2A, which is all happening at roadway grade, and the north side of the street, you see there's the two-way Class IV separated bikeway. And the, one of the two travel lanes in the westbound direction is turned into a bus-only lane, leaving one lane for general travel in that direction. On the other side, by shaving two feet off of the existing median, which is something that I hear could occur under some improvements that are currently pursued by the city to anticipate this, we could accommodate three travel lanes, one of which could be turned into a bus-only lane, leaving two lanes in the eastbound direction. And the sidewalk would remain unchanged on both sides. Then option 2B, the only difference here really is that the two-way race, race Class IV bicycle facility on the north side now is raised up to the sidewalk level. And then at the, for both options, the stop area looks the same. And again, the basic concept of having the cyclists behind the transit area on the north side is still happening in this one, just like shown before. It's just that it's a two-way facility now. And on the south side of the street, that's more like a standard bus stop now. And in order to have pedestrians comfortably pass in front of the shelter, we would need about three feet of easement, so it's two feet less than in the previous option. And then the third option, this is now where we're only having a bus-only lane in the eastbound direction, and we're foregoing the same in the westbound direction. So hence, you see two travel lanes, general travel lanes, shown in the westbound direction. Cycle facility looks exactly the same, and the eastbound direction looks the same as in the previous option. And then again, at mid-block, the only difference is now that the, this is shown as raised. That's the difference between A and B. And then 3A and B, the stop area, again, looks the same as for the, for option two. So they are all, the conditions, they are all equal. So something you did not see in the options report, for those of you who may have perused that document, from feedback we received at the planning commission, caused us to develop a fourth option, which is presented here. The question raised there was, well, could we, instead of the two-way, there was some discomfort with the two-way Class IV option. And so could we split that up and have separated bikeways going in both directions? And this option explores exactly that. So it's basically the same as option three, but with the two-way facility split into two one-way facilities. And as you can see, things are relatively tight. There's just two-foot buffers, and the bikeways can only be five feet wide. That's all the space we have. And then at a bus stop, under option four, it would, the concepts are all the same, the dimensions are slightly different. Everything is a little tighter than in the other options.
I'd like to add, can you go back, please, to that? I'd like to add a comment about this and the previous drawing.
Do you want the previous first or this one?
It doesn't matter. This is fine. You'll notice that it says relocated median. In the other options, the one that has the two-way bikeway on the north side of the street, the existing median stays where it is. And the only thing that has to be modified about the median is that about two feet have to, as Thomas said, about two feet have to be shaved off the south side of it in order to accommodate the three travel lanes. But in this option, in order to fit, actually, could you go back to the previous one, the one that shows the, yeah. In this option, in order to fit a bike lane on either side, the entire median has to be moved over. So in other words, what we're doing is basically demolishing the existing median and building a new median. So this is, although on paper, in the cross section, it looks pretty straightforward, this is much more expensive because it involves eliminating all the new trees that are going to be planted and planting new trees again and basically completely rebuilding a new median. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, very good point. We should probably have put that in the key distinguishing characteristics at the top because, as that is a key distinguishing feature. And then we also received a lot of questions during the previous presentations about, well, what happens on the block between Emery and San Pablo, where things get very tight because of the existing turn lanes that we cannot really eliminate. As you know, there's one turn lane into the regional retail area, that's the, in the westbound direction. And then, of course, here shown on the right-hand side, that's the left turn onto San Pablo off of eastbound 40th. And so those are pretty much out of the question. They need to be there. And so we were asked, well, what can we do in this area? And this, this slide is showing you that by squeezing the lanes as they exist today, there is some way to get at least a two, two one-way separated bikeways in, into this area on the north side. It would require filling in that parking bay that's there at the liquor store. Without that, we wouldn't be able to achieve this.
Can the road be realigned to make a two-way cycle track on the north side? It just, why can't you just move the cycle track over and shift all the lanes? What would happen?
Yeah, and this is, well, I'm going to respond to your question, sort of almost, you know, simultaneously looking at Rob to jump in here if needed. My understanding is that that would be difficult as we have to keep a certain alignment of the straight travel lanes that continue across San Pablo. And if we manipulated the curb-to-curb in a significant way, we would cause offsets that would be unacceptable.
More unacceptable than what we have at Powell and Christie, which was recommended approved at some point?
That's a good question if they would be...
You use the microphone?
Sure. Powell and Christie is, I think they would be more than Powell and Christie.
They're an entire traffic lane, right? Because they used to be the two straight lanes, which are now the left turn lane for onto Christie, is now, that's the lane, and then there's a second left turn lane. And so the right turn lane is actually now becomes the first center lane when you come across there. It moves an entire lane over.
I think this, I think this moves an entire lane over as well. It depends on what we do on the east side of San Pablo on 40th. So if we, if we move those curbs, depending on how we move those curbs, we could have as much as a full lane. We just would need to figure that out, depending on which options you prefer us to look at further.
I don't want to go into all my questions yet because I have a number of comments on this, but thank you for that. Go ahead.
So, and this shows how we could achieve a two-way separated bikeway in that area. And again, this is by squeezing, squeezing lanes. And we, we did look at the offsets. And so this would, this would still meet the criteria that we have been working with so far, which is about a half a lane of offset across the intersection.
Let me jump in and just add one other thing. This and the previous slides have not really been fully fleshed out because they are the result of some comments that we just got recently from the planning commission and the BPAC. If we were to do this between Emery and San Pablo, we would probably want to continue the two-way cycle track on the north side all the way to Adeline, which would mean we would then have to come up with another scheme for that segment between San Pablo and Adeline. That has not been drawn yet, so we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. But hopefully, in doing that, we could take into account these lane offsets.
And then finally, in, encouraged by comments received from AC Transit, we also looked at the possibility of making transit more efficient along the corridor by considering the elimination of one pair of stops. And so currently, our work proposes to eliminate the stop at Harlan. And I think Diana has some more information about some quick survey that was conducted in the field on that question when she was out there. And so anyway, this is currently a proposal to not continue having a stop in those two locations.
Can you go back just one, one slide real quick?
This one or the previous?
Yeah, that one, right there.
Yeah.
So the existence of the stops at Emery don't contribute in any way to the conflicts we have between Emery and San Pablo right now?
They are making things, to a degree, tighter. So the reason, well, let me, let me say this. As you can see, where there's purplish indicator is, and these color bars at Emery, as you can see, that remains to be a nearsighted stop in travel direction. Transit agencies usually prefer to have a farside, and in this case, we wouldn't locate it into the Emery block exactly for all these spatial issues. But the surveys in the field, we did look at potentially eliminating Emery in order to gain some degrees of freedom at that intersection. But there were clearly more users in favor of keeping that stop versus the Harlan stop.
I would also note that the Emery go-round doesn't stop at Harlan Street, so it's only AC Transit buses that we're talking about.
But the Emery one, just to be clear, 36, 57, F and S, all go to the block between Adeline and San Pablo? I mean, we're talking one block?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Between Adeline and, yes.
We just want to make sure, that's the route for all of them? I know, I know 57, 36, and F, dude, I don't know what S is.
That's an Emery go-round.
Oh, that's the, that's the south, Powell, Shellmount. Okay, all right. Okay. Oh, I see them, nice, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, with that, I'm handing it back to Diana.
So here's what we heard at a workshop, survey, online survey. And while we were talking about the bus stop, we did do a little survey at the bus stops. We didn't find many people at that stop we're proposing to eliminate, and they didn't have groceries or wheelchairs or anything like that. So we said, let's do it. So, but we had an online survey and a workshop and planning commission and BPAC. And so I want to tell you what people said. The surveys in the workshop showed support for option one in the short term, but the planning commissioners did not think that the bike lane in front of the bus stop looked safe. In terms of long-term, some people liked option two with the median, and some people liked option three with the sidewalks. And the Emery go-round people said, it takes us five minutes to load a wheelchair, so we sure would like to still have a bus lane. In terms of the parking, the locate, if we keep parking, where do we put the bikes? Most people wanted to eliminate the parking to create the bus lane, but if it is kept, most people wanted to have a protected bikeway like Telegraph Avenue, but the planning commissioners thought it would be confusing and wanted to keep it more like it is now. In terms of west-only bus lanes, bus lanes, bus-only lanes west of San Pablo, having two of them means we've created a new lane eastbound on the south side, but we would convert a travel lane on the north side. travel lane on the north side, westbound. And 65% of this respondents and five commissioners supported it, one commissioner opposed it, and B-PAC didn't really say. So, and we did actually ask in the survey, what mode do you use to travel here? And the highest mode was driving. You could answer more than one, but a lot of people said they do drive, so it's not like we haven't surveyed the drivers.
Who is the planning commissioner that opposed it?
That I don't remember.
Charlie?
Do you remember?
Not sure I remember either. All right. We can check the...
It's okay, I just curious.
Whether to have a raised bikeway or not, most people like that idea, it would allow us to put the trees between the pedestrians and the traffic. And B-PAC said, well, we don't care if you do this exactly, but we want more than paint and flexible bollards, whether it's a curb or whatever. And then in terms of the one-way protected bikeway, which the Planning Commission objected to the two-way, the B-PAC preferred the two-way because it looked more protected. And what they want is consistent treatment all the way from IKEA to Adeline, whether, whatever it is.
Note that the Planning Commission was not unanimous on that. There were some commissioners who liked the two-way bikeway on the north side.
And they also had not seen the image of the protected intersection, so they weren't clear how the bicyclists could get across the street.
Can I also jump in and say that B-PAC had a split vote on raising the bikeways as well? That was, I think, the only thing they split on.
Okay. And for the stop, 88% of the respondents and five planning commissioners wanted to eliminate the stop, and I didn't ask B-PAC about that. So, here are the questions for you. For the Bus Hub area between San Pablo Avenue and Adeline, what do you like and dislike about each option? Would you like to see option 1A implemented in the short term? And which of the three options do you prefer in the long term? I'll read them all, and then I have one list, one, on one slide, they're all on one slide. In the west, would you like to eliminate parking in order to create a bus-only lane or keep parking? If you keep parking, which side of the parking should the bikes be on? If we remove parking and add an eastbound bus-only lane, should we convert a westbound mixed-travel lane to a bus-only lane? Should the bikeway be raised and the trees moved? Should the separated bikeway be two-way on the north side or two-one-ways on both sides, meaning moving the median and, and moving the signals, the traffic signal lights? And whatever we do, should we have the same treatment all the way from IKEA to Adeline Street? And should we eliminate the Harlan Street bus stops? So, now it's your turn.
Looks like a bar exam question. Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Are there clarifying questions? We can always ask more later. Are there clarifying questions before, before we begin?
Just one, the discussion questions say Haven Street bus stops, and you said Harlan.
It means Harlan.
It's Harlan.
It's Harlan. Thank you. Scott?
Are there traffic studies to be added to this that maybe should be talked about? You know, the difference between eastbound and westbound traffic?
We have some information already. Eastbound, there's more, the traffic is more clogged up because of San Pablo Avenue. Westbound, there's more traffic volume. So, our Public Works Department says that, given what the volumes are, if you study road diets, we're at the edge of where it's okay to study, to have a road diet. We might have significant traffic backups if we eliminate one of the travel lanes.
Westbound?
Westbound, yeah. We eliminate that westbound traveling.
Okay. Scott, is that good?
That's good.
Any other questions? Okay, this is an item that's open for public comment. I only have one public comment card to start, and that's Mary Farrell. All members of the public have three minutes to speak.
I think the design plans are really interesting and very helpful. However, and I only heard one comment about making the barriers a little closer together. I'm concerned about seniors or people with mobility problems making it across in a timely manner because they move slower than, than people without problems. And, and I'm on the Commission on Aging, and we have had two or three people in the last few years make a special trip over to talk about especially the roadway between west of San Pablo. You know, we have senior housing over there. And people came in to talk about how dangerous it was to cross 40th, and they felt like it was really unsafe. So if that can, if you could take that into consideration, because I know safety is a major concern, but I didn't hear that specifically addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item may do so now. Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed, and we'll bring it back for discussion. I'd like to start with Vice Mayor Medina.
All right. I'm going to start not by, I think...
Let's just talk, let's talk at a high level, and then we can go through the questions after we've heard everybody's kind of general thoughts.
Right, okay. So, as the B-PAC liaison, they came forward with their recommendations, which were included on Diana's chart, but I can also communicate to you those recommendations, and I agree with them. I think we should not be considering two separate treatments on either side of San Pablo. The B-PAC and I concur, wants only a contiguous treatment that goes from Adeline all the way to IKEA. That is what they're requesting, I think that makes a lot of sense. They were in favor of a two-way cycle track on a longer treatment. If you have a short two-way cycle track, then it creates excess going across intersections, which is the most dangerous thing for bicyclists. So if we can have a long contiguous treatment, they're strongly in favor of a two-way cycle track. That is a protected cycle track, and they mean more than a flexible bollard. There was some discussion on whether or not it needs to be a raised bike lane, we think that's an interesting concept, but also, there was a note, I think Diana captured it well, is not sure if it's worth the cost, because there's also things you could do like a six-inch curb or landscaping curb. So I think at the very, the very least, we need to look at this as not having one treatment on one side of San Pablo and another treatment on the other side. I would ask the entire council, as a matter of policy, to only move forward on a contiguous treatment that does not change on, especially in between San Pablo and Emory, because it is more confusing and more dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists if they have to look around and always be wayfinding of where they're supposed to go. So I sort of ask that at a high level, if we can all agree that that is how this project should be done. I think it's the most important thing we can do for public safety and ease of use.
Okay. Member Pats?
I'm glad you said that, because that was my thought the whole time, is why are these separate? And the only thing I really have to add to that is, it would have been very valuable for me to see what happens after Adeline, because that's the transition of the BART and a major traffic. So it sort of seemed to me that, I saw it in three chunks, not just two. It ended at San Pablo, it ended at Adeline, and so for me, it has to be this contiguous single piece.
I mean, after Adeline, there are Sheroes, which are the...
Yeah, no, I know what's there. I mean, that's my block, yeah.
As you know, yes.
That's where I bike, but I just, it would have been really informative, because that's a transition, that's the challenging transition. As you change the lane configurations there, how do the bicycles transition from, you know, if it's a single double bike lane? How do they get across Adeline and then across 40th into the, what did you call them? I'm sorry.
Cycle track.
The green...
No, the Sheroes.
The Sheroes. Thank you. Sheroes. I like Sheroes.
Death to Sheroes.
Death to Sheroes.
Mayor Bowders?
I mean, I like the name, sorry. Not the, I don't like the concept, I like the...
Can I just make a comment about that?
Of course, you may.
I think what we would have there at Adeline and 40th, if you had this continuous two-way cycle track on the north side all the way to Adeline Street, would be one of these protected intersections, as was illustrated there, hopefully with really good signage and signal timing, that it would make it real clear how the cyclists would have to then get back to the, you know, other side of the street. If you, by the way, if you haven't seen it, there is a sort of a half of a protected intersection in Richmond at Central Avenue near Costco. If you take the Bay Trail up along beside the Bay there, and then you get to that intersection, and then the bike path continues diagonally opposite the intersection, and up until recently, it's been very unclear how a cyclist is supposed to get diagonally across the intersection. So they've striped, like I say, kind of a half of a protected intersection. It's big green swaths going across two legs of the intersection with signals, you know, that go with it. It's, it's very clear how you do it now.
Sloths?
Swaths.
Sloths.
Swaths. Crosswalks. Crosswalks for bikes.
How did I miss the sloth installation?
Sloth, sloth.
Okay. Member Donahue?
Well, just right off, I love this, you know, everything about this, I love. Okay, at the beginning, I think we should do option one immediately. It's, it is safe, in my opinion, for cyclists to have that right lane, to introduce them to be able to cross to San Pablo, and it also does something immediately. Option one, if you could pull it up on the screen, I'd just like to show a condition that is really annoying that's happening, that we, that I hope our police department really hears about, how the delivery trucks for 7-Eleven keep blocking the buses on both 40th Street and San Pablo, even though they're required to pull in behind the 7-Eleven there. And option one immediately solves the problem at 40th Street because all the buses have to go around the bollards that you can barely see where A section is, and then the delivery truck would pinch down that intersection to one lane and would cause such a commotion that I think they would even be embarrassed to do that. So I think, you know, right away, I think we should just get that as, you know, cheap, fast and easy will really help. The, the other side of this is that those trucks do want to pull in to that little driveway there, so we got to make sure that the, that, that side of it is taken into our account, the delivery trucks going in to service 7-Eleven right there. I think that, you know, going down to, on this map, option two does have better flow overall, and I think that is my preferred choice instead of the bottom one, which I just think it restricts too much traffic flow, and I just don't think we can get away with it there and have, have our 40th Street function. The, I could keep going on my comments.
You're welcome to keep going if you'd like.
Going down to IKEA from San Pablo, I am for eliminating the parking. I think that, that would be, we would really have much safer and clearly defined bicycle and pedestrian design there. And I totally agree that the design has to be continuous, not, you know, whatever we choose, it's got to be the same all the way, the entire length of this. And I, I am for eliminating the Harlan stop. I, I think that, that will save time, and if we can get our buses through the San Pablo corridor, I just think that that's really important to having people take Emory Go-Round and AC Transit. And we just really have to think about that side of travel times for our buses, and of course, the, the protected intersections, I love the design, and I, as a cyclist, I really see how they will work, and I just really want those protected intersections. They will really make a difference for all parties, so I am 100% for those.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
So I am, I will second what my colleagues have said about having a consistent contiguous treatment for the bike lanes on both of the areas that we're investigating. I also agree that improving our, the safety of our bike lanes warrants, eliminating the few parking spaces on 40th Street that we're looking at. And I just want to take a moment to appreciate the fact that we're looking at the safety and comfort of people who ride transit, who ride bikes, and who walk instead of simply moving traffic through, and parking and single occupancy vehicles in, in our town. So I want, I want to appreciate the, the members of City Council who serve on our Transportation Committee, our member and alternate to Alameda County Transportation Commission, and our liaison to the Bike Ped Committee. I feel that I'm probably the, I was called on last because I'm the least subject matter expert on this topic, and I'm happy to learn from all of your comments, because I have a feeling when we get through all of the, the specific questions, you're all going to be very opinionated, and I will learn a lot.
I'd like to invite Member Medina to add on before I comment.
Right. Oh, one thing I forgot to mention was that B-PAC was strongly in favor of at least one bus-only lane. They view that as for pedestrians and people who use multimodal transit, one of the best things that we can do. And John and I have been sitting on an ILC with AC Transit. We have a representative from AC Transit here tonight with us. Thank you for coming. And I think this is a great way to improve bus access through our city, so I will support B-PAC's request to have at least one bus-only lane.
Thank you. And so my comments, a year and a half ago, I requested to have a meeting with AC Transit to discuss improving transit movement on the 40th Street corridor and making sure that people who use Emory Go-Round and bus service here in Emeryville can get to and from BART through the city easily. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned, we're on the interagency liaison committee, and we have worked very well with all the amazing staff we have here. Diana and Charlie and Ryan and Amber and soon-to-be Christine joining us at those, have had regular meetings with AC Transit about it, and we've had several, we have several projects that we wanted to bring to the City Council, and this was one of them, and it's been vetted by B-PAC and by the Planning Commission and a lot of community members, and I'm grateful for that. I support the proposal to have contiguous treatment throughout the corridor, and I think that right now, we're talking about Adeline to Hubbard Street, but my vision is to connect that all the way up Shellmount someday to the public market. I see opportunities for that, and for that reason also, thinking in the long term, the infrastructure along Shellmount is hard infrastructure on the side, that's the south side of 40th Street, the side that abuts the freeway. And so I, I support a two-way cycle track on the north side, and I think it should be continuous all the way to Adeline Street. I know that presents some design challenges, especially in the block between Emory and San Pablo, but when I look at option three for the Adeline to San Pablo block, there is an opportunity to put a two-way cycle track actually on the front. It's not proposed in any of this, I see everyone's heads nodding, but I'm aware that that can be accomplished in that space. And I know that it will take some effort to make that feasible between Emory and San Pablo, but I believe we owe that to the community. I think when it comes to transit design, one of the things I'm grateful about this council and this community is, we are really forward-thinking. I am clearly the outspoken person in favor of active transit at ACTC when it comes time to discussing what should be prioritized as the next investment and the next designs. And I really attribute a lot of the, the good comments I can bring there to the conversations we have here. I support eliminating all parking on 40th Street. If we want a transportation system for the future, we need to think of the future, and that should not include car parking on 40th Street. I support at a minimum having a transit lane dedicated eastbound to the BART station, a transit-only lane, I should say, a red-carpeted lane that is clearly designated for transit purposes only. We've heard repeatedly from the Emory Ground in particular that one of the reasons people cite for why they have, the ridership has decreased is because of traffic backup and time delays between Watergate, Powell Street Plaza and Bay Street, getting to San Pablo to connect to buses or getting to BART. And so I believe that we need to do some work there. Also to the issue of how do we continue the, the treatment beyond Adeline Street into Oakland? I have a very positive relationship with Oakland on this issue, and we've discussed several cross-jurisdictional items, and I believe that this is something that if we move forward with this, we could have a very potentially good conversation with Oakland about actually making 40th Street a complete smart transit corridor in those respects. I support eliminating the Harlan Street stop, and I am, I am neutral on whether or not we should raise or keep at street level the bike, the bike lanes on a cycle track. I see values to each of those, and I believe that at a couple of the intersections, as was discussed on here, and I have spent a significant... a significant amount of time in Vancouver, where we do have protected intersections up there. And so I think that there are a couple intersections in particular that with a two-way cycle track, we could look at improvements on the north side of 40th Street that would further improve the safety of bike commuters through this corridor. So those are my preliminary comments. And moving to the discussion questions. For the bus hub area between San Pablo Avenue and Adeline Street, what do you like or dislike about each, oh, I have, yeah, each option? Would you like to see Option 1A implemented in the short term? Which option do you prefer in the long term? So I'm going to open because I didn't add this comment. I appreciate Member Donahue's comments. I do disagree with you a little bit. I disagree with you, not because of what you see as the value of Option 1. I believe we should move into what we really want and spend the money on what we want. But I'm also, because I'm concerned about it confusing, if we change things too often, I'm concerned about people being disincentivized to use the infrastructure we build. And I also really think it's not a good idea in front of a parking entrance at the 7-Eleven to have buses pulling out at the same time that bicycles are pulling into a right turn space. I just feel like that that's a conflict. I know it's not good anyway right now, but I just really am concerned about that conflict. So that's my only comment on that item. But given that, could we just, could we see the three options for that particular block so that council members can opine on which option they prefer? And recognizing that I've mentioned that I believe that we should consider a cycle track all the way through, which was not proposed as an option, but I think should be considered.
I think since every single one of us agreed that we're interested in a contiguous option, I think frankly, it renders Question 1 moot.
Well, let's actually do this. So the Question 1 will be this: Do council members prefer a two-way cycle track on the north side of 40th as the contiguous treatment we select, or would council members prefer to have one bike lane on each side of 40th Street? So knowing that we'll do it all the way, we'll do it continuously the same way for the benefit of all bicyclists, which of those two treatment styles would you prefer? I'll start with Christian on the first one.
So the two-way would be on the north side?
Yes. We'd eliminate the parking and put it there.
Yeah, that's my preference.
Ally?
Yes, I'll note that our, some of our highest rates of bike and car incidences are on the other side of the street in front of the target, and so we would be eliminating that problem entirely and making our streets much safer.
Diane?
I'd be in favor of that.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so Question 1 is answered unanimously with, we would like a two-way cycle track between Adeline Street. And it's proposed here as just to Hubbard, but I have a question for you, Charlie. Can we do this over the bridge with the painted lane? Can we do this?
Yes, yes. The Public Works is considering, Andrew could perhaps provide additional information, but I understand that Public Works is considering reconfiguring the bridge. It would still have one travel lane in each direction as it does today, but with a two-way cycle, you know, bikeway on the north side.
So can, if staff or council is agreeable, we'd like to just give the direction that go ahead and do that all the way to IKEA.
Good. That, just to clarify, Hubbard Street, it wouldn't really end at Hubbard Street. This study goes all the way to the bridge. We didn't include the bridge itself in this study because it was our understanding that Public Works was doing that as a separate project. But it makes sense to then continue it over the bridge and then have another one of these protected intersections at the IKEA entrance, at the IKEA entrance, so that you could get back to the other side of the street. But that's also, as you know, where the Bay Bridge Trail intersects Shellmount Street. So it's a logical place to bring this two-way cycle track to.
Yeah, bike nexus. Andrew, did you have a comment on that?
I think Charlie pretty much covered it in that we did remove the median with those palm trees on the foot of the bridge there, in part to provide an opportunity for what we're talking about right now. So we don't have any further plans to restripe the bridge in a different configuration right now, other than to coordinate with what's happening here and see if we possibly extend it.
Awesome, thank you. Can you pull the questions back up, Diana?
Thank you. For the part of 40th Street between Emory and the bridge, generally, would you prefer to keep parking and forego an added bus-only lane or eliminate the parking? Did I hear already, we have agreed to eliminate?
Eliminate the parking.
We're eliminating the parking? And so for that?
AC Transit in disbelief of us over there.
No, my favorite, my favorite is going to AC Transit for the meetings, and every time the staff and engineers sit down and they look at Ally and I, and they go, "You guys really aren't for real. You're the only city that's like, let's just give buses what they want." We're like, "Yeah, Bus Islands, pedestrian access, wheelchair access, we're all for it." So we have a very good relationship with AC Transit, and we have some other surprises that are in the works that we hope to bring to you soon.
A puppy.
Not a puppy. Puppies are not a surprise.
You're going to surprise us.
Ryan already took a puppy, I heard. So, but we eliminated the parking and added the bus-only lane. So you got both those together. Okay. So number three is if parking is, nope, number three is moot. Number four, if parking is removed and an eastbound bus-only lane is added, should a westbound vehicle lane be converted to a bus-only lane, which, for the reminder to council, that would mean there'd be one travel lane and one bus-only lane, okay, going westbound? Should the curb be extended, the sidewalk widened, the bike wait? Oh, that's a lot of, we'll come back to that question. So let's start with the first one. Westbound vehicle lane be converted into a bus-only lane, meaning we'd have only one travel lane and we'd have a transit-only lane? So we'd have two travel lanes and a transit-only lane going towards BART, but we'd have only one travel lane and one transit lane going towards the shopping center. What is the preference of council? I'll start with Scott.
Well, to me, that is really, I want to see the traffic numbers, you know, more traffic volume heading west, and yet we have the big backup going east. It's just so anti-intuitive and, you know, but I'm sure could be deductively calculated what the meaning of this would be.
It's because of the congestion at the intersection of San Pablo. That's why it backs up in the eastbound direction, even though there's actually more cars going westbound.
Okay, is the, are the two, if we had a bus-only lane and, you know, a single travel lane, is there sufficient volume for all traffic, for buses and cars, to the greater extent, for most of the day?
Well, we'd have to have, we'd have to study that, I think. I don't know if Rob has anything to add to that, but yeah, I think intuitively, if we had a bus-only lane in the westbound direction and only one travel lane, you'd have severe backups of cars going westbound. It could even back up through the San Pablo Avenue intersection. So that could be problematic.
Yeah, that seems, it seems, I'd have to really see the numbers for me to support.
I'd also like to point out a couple of things. If it is a mixed travel lane and not a bus-only lane on the north side going westbound, the buses are still going to stop in the travel lane. They're not going to pull, you know, out into a pullout. They'll stop right in the travel lane, and the cars that are in that lane will have to stop behind them and wait for them to proceed or else move over to the left lane and go around them. So that's one point. The second point is, it wouldn't be that difficult to convert a travel lane to a bus-only lane in the future, or vice versa. You know, whichever you decide, if it doesn't, if it's not working, you can change it because it doesn't involve any real physical construction or change to the cross-section. The only thing it involves is putting red paint down or taking the red paint away.
Which I'm sure Andrew says is so easy.
Well, it's easier than moving a median.
That's true. I agree with that. Okay, Councilmember Martinez. Oh, do you have?
So I would go with the second choice of not having a bus-only lane westbound for that reason. And, you know, the buses would still have the ease of just pulling up, not having to pull in and out of traffic. It would still be very efficient for buses. So it just seems like that would be the sensible choice.
Okay. Diane?
I'm going to be the unsensible one then, and if it's easy enough to remove the red paint, I'd like to start out with a bus-only lane.
Okay, Christian.
You know, I see myself cursing at people driving in the red lane, so other than that, I think it's the right way to go, but I'm not looking forward to all the profanity my child's going to hear as people pass me in that red lane. So I'm with Member Martinez on this.
Yeah, they're still, they're still, let's be clear, they're still going to drive in that lane, but they're going to, when they pull up behind a bus that stopped.
They're going to get a ticket, right, Captain Collins?
There.
About the shame.
Yeah, they're going to feel, they're going to be like, "I did this to myself."
Can I just say, Mayor Bouders, that I think, it sounds like we're getting some pretty clear direction here, which is great. But the next phase of the study, in addition to engineering drawings, is also going to include traffic analysis. So...
I was just about to say, is this the one time we don't have to have a traffic study? Because I've been trying to remove some lanes for a while now.
We're going to do a traffic study.
We'll get a traffic study.
Hate to tell you, but we are going to do a traffic study.
I do it.
And you can, you know, whatever you decide tonight, doesn't have to be cast in stone, and you can modify it in the future based on the results of the analysis that we bring you.
Thank you.
Cast in paint.
Thank you.
Fine. Pending the omnipresent traffic study, I'll do the red on both sides until the traffic study tells me I can't do it.
So I thank you for going out first on that, because I'm totally in favor of a transit lane in both ways. I believe you induce demand by providing the infrastructure that people need to use to take transit to places. And so if you continue to keep things as travel lanes, people continue to use their car, if they see the bus flying down the right lane, and they're like, "I could just take Emeryville Road, go ride home from BART every day as opposed to parking my car and paying at a BART station," they'll do that. And so, you know, I just think it's, you know, we're in a position to do something really, really innovative here in the East Bay that shouldn't be science, but it's become that. And I agree with you that we need to examine the traffic, you know, components. My ask is this, that if you do do that traffic study, just something to think about to fair and peers, you know, the impacts and the potential for people to take San Pablo to Powell, because a lot of people who take 40th to Shellmount are just going to the same place that people who take San Pablo to Powell go. So I just, I would be really interested as to, if people knew that it's less accommodating for them to take a car via 40th Street, and they're trying to get to the same place that they could with, you know, lots of lanes on San Pablo and Powell, would we have real traffic problems, or would people displace and learn that, you know, the proper automobile route is a different way? So I just want that kind of to not just be, you know, there's so many blocks within the, within each block of the transit impact, just think bigger on that one. But I, so I think the direction is that we would prefer a transit lane in both directions, a dedicated one with two travel lanes headed eastbound, and one travel lane and one bus lane headed westbound, waiting, pending the traffic impact study. So should the curb be extended, the sidewalk widened, the bike way placed at sidewalk level, and trees be moved to between the sidewalk and the bicycle and vehicle traffic? That's a lot of question. Can you provide a diagram?
What it really is saying is, do you want the cycle track, apparently the two-way bikeway, which is what you're directing, do you want that to just be at roadway level and separated by the traffic from like bollards and a buffer, or do you want it to be an elevated separate thing at sidewalk level?
Okay, I'll begin with Member Medina.
Honestly, I think we'd have to see the pricing on that before we can make an informed decision. It could be phenomenally expensive to raise a bike lane for that duration. I think just doing a protected bike lane is a half million a mile minimum, probably more now and more in the Bay Area. Andrew's given me a yes, it's more than that. So we'd have to see the price on that, and also, I'd like to see what's in between raising the whole thing and just having flexible bollards. Is there an in-between those two options?
Okay, Christian?
Yeah, I'm with, to me, it's just cost prohibitive.
Diane?
I don't have strong feelings on this one.
Scott?
I have just noticed that when bicyclists and pedestrians are at the same level, pedestrians just can kind of drip, it isn't intuitively clear, and you get pedestrian-bicycle conflict. So in a way, just leaving it a part of the street makes it so those bikers just flow on, and, you know, it's probably better to leave it.
Christian?
I think we go with Charlie's solution of paint. Right, we paint the bike lane green.
Okay, so I favor for cost purposes, I favor using the street level and creating a difference between the pedestrian space and the bike space, but having, whether that's a median or some other raised space, an actual physical barrier like a concrete median or curb between, as was diagrammed, between the cycle track and the travel lane for the buses.
Oh, for the buses?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, okay. And the pedestrian, if you leave it, if you leave the bike way at the roadway level, then the pedestrians and the bike way will already be separated by six inches.
Right, so they'll be separated, but, but once you get to the other side, I'd like to have, like they do in Vancouver, they actually have a curb that comes up that's two feet wide or three feet wide that is between the traffic lane and the bike lane, so that it's not like a car can, or bus can veer off from the travel lane into the cycle track.
Got it, got it.
Yeah. Okay. So looking at the rest, so we answered the question about the two-way on the north side, that's been answered. We, you were asked about the same treatment, we already answered that. And then should we eliminate the bus stops? I heard everybody say they were fine with eliminating the bus stop at Harlan.
Yeah.
Staff, are there other questions that you'd like to get feedback on?
I think you've covered it. Diana, is there something else?
Take your time.
Our consultants, clear?
I would like to provide a couple of...
Yeah, go ahead and come into the microphone and let us know.
Thank you. So in terms of the continuity of the bus-only lanes, I wanted to point out that the block between Emory and San Pablo would present a problem in that, because we have the two turn lanes there. So that's something, I mean, we hear what your preference is, but I think we would just, you know, take that preference back and, you know, study it as Charlie suggested, and then come back to you with, you know, what may or may not be feasible on that particular block.
Okay. We understand that that's a special...
And what I heard you all say, I think, is that you want a continuous bicycle treatment from Adeline to IKEA.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a continuous bus treatment. I mean, because if you look at the different diagrams that we showed you, the bus-only lane is only west of Emory Street, except in Option 1 for between Adeline and San Pablo, which is basically the existing condition, which you're not saying you want.
I think we understand, I think the goal is to prioritize the bike space, and so we understand that we may not have a dedicated transit-only lane westbound for that block, and I think that's a condition that everybody I'm seeing heads on.
You won't have a dedicated bus-only lane east of Emory at all.
Going westbound.
Going either way.
Oh, either way?
Right.
Okay. So be it. Can only do what we can do with infrastructure, right?
Right.
We get it. Okay.
We really can't eliminate any of those turn lanes, that's just like a no thing? Those turn lanes have to stay in between Emory and San Pablo?
The problem is, there is such a high volume, we did look at this in the past, there's such a high volume of left turns, both going from eastbound 40th to northbound San Pablo and from westbound 40th to southbound Emory, that you may know there's two side-by-side left turn lanes there. We looked at overlapping them, making them shorter and overlapping them, and therefore reducing by a lane, and it turned out to just be not feasible, because there's just too high volume in both directions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Any other questions from staff, comments?
I just want to comment that I think this has been great. You've given us very clear direction, and I'm pretty excited about this.
And so are we. And I think AC Transit is probably excited, AC Transit gives us a thumbs up. Hey, you know, making miracles happen sometimes. Okay. All right, we'll move on from that agenda item. Thank you, staff, for that presentation and for all our work on that, and look forward to continuing that conversation and bringing the transit modes of the future to our town. Okay, item 12.4 is a discussion of e-scooter regulations and dockless bike shares and bicycles, and it's listed as Vice Mayor Medina, but is, are you going to present?
I am.
Well, she's listed here, usually I have a staff person's name, but it says Vice Mayor Medina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have a, I'm Andrew Cloud, Public Works Director, and I have a fairly short presentation, and then we will turn it over to you for discussion. We're here to discuss the potential for e-scooter regulations, and that's the purpose of this item. We have a schedule, fairly optimistic perhaps, depending on what kind of feedback we receive tonight and how much direction, how much input, I should say, because there's no specific direction we're looking for at this point, but we do want to hear your comments, your discussion, and what you're interested in. Discuss that tonight, and then be able to put together something hopefully and take it to the Transportation Committee on November the 15th. And then, if we can work it up well from there, come back to council in December and January, and then have our regulations in place. Background, very quickly, as scooters are here, we have one business license in place, we have no regulations, as you know. City of San Francisco is currently in a one-year pilot program, City of Oakland as well, Berkeley developing a program. And one thing that we have initiated is reached out to some of the other communities here and initiating a working group between Oakland and Berkeley and Albany and Alameda and Emeryville to discuss what they're doing in their cities, and not necessarily all have exactly the same thing, but try to have a good deal of consistency, since these, the vehicles will be traveling, obviously, in and out and between the various cities. Just as a little bit of information, there is existing law in the California Vehicle Code that these e-scooters are to, the code requires that they... Code that these e-scooters are to, the code requires that they should be ridden on the road and not on the sidewalks. They may park on the sidewalk, but may not block pedestrian pathways. And they may ride on the multi-use pathways unless the local jurisdiction has other specific rules against it, and that would be like on our Greenway, for example. And if you're under 18, you must wear a helmet. These, this is the meat of it, and this is where I will be turning it back over to you, is that these are some of the items for consideration, and some of the discussion we wanted to hear is, we put together these regulations, safety, parking requirements, and a clear path of travel. This is especially important to maintain the ADA access on the sidewalks. What is the permitting process going to look like? What is the fee structure? The total number of permits and/or the total number of scooters? Do we want to have unlimited number of permits, but limit the total number of scooters? Or do we want to say, no, we only want to issue a few permits to a few companies and then have numbers on scooters signed to each permit holder? There's a lot of variety there. Data collection, we want some information. Equitable access. E-scooters and dockless bike share, are we going to try to regulate simply the e-scooters at this point, or have a regulation that deals with both e-scooters and dockless bike share at the same time? What kind of penalties? What kind of enforcement? And what is the staffing requirements to do this, and what would be the cost to administer? So with that, I do want to turn it back over to you and say, what do you think?
Okay, before we do a discussion, because it's an open agenda item, it's new, thank you for presenting that outline, we'll leave that up here, and if you would humor us, we're probably going to have some questions about what might the options be on some of these? So stick around. I can call on you from your seat, that's okay. So I'm going to open this up to public comment at this time, and I have one speaker card on this item. Megan Colford, you have three minutes, Megan, thank you for coming.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Colford. I'm here on behalf of Lime. As you probably know, Lime operates five cities in the East Bay. I think we're actually coming up on our, we just passed our one-year anniversary of operating in Alameda, which was our first East Bay city. And we're in 13 markets around the Bay Area and hundreds more globally. We have dockless e-bikes, dockless e-bikes, regular e-bikes, no, dockless e-bikes, dockless regular bikes, as well as dockless electric scooters. Being here tonight, witnessing the decisions that you're making, I'd like to commend you on your forward thinking around transportation, and Lime is excited to see that this is on the agenda tonight. And I'm here to offer our assistance, guidance, insight, as you're thinking through these, and to city staff, if we can be helpful in any way. We've gone through these processes many, many times and have recommendations on what we've seen work well. In particular, we support usage-based caps that allow for the city to increase the number of vehicles in the City of Emeryville based on service agreements, as well as if operators are reaching particular thresholds. We also support consistent hardware specifications for all operators, and there are some industry specifications that, again, we can share. Additionally, there's similar industry-wide data sharing specifications that we support and that we're hoping all of our markets can move to the same data sharing to make it easier for everyone involved. And then a lot of these pieces up here, we already have in place, we have a really scalable equity program, and so community outreach equity are of importance to us and hope that's included in the regulations as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, I'll get to work with you or city staff moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, the public comment is over. And again, I would like to ask, since she volunteered early on, and whereas I try to do all the transit stuff, she volunteered to take on scooters. So Vice Mayor Medina, this is your agenda item.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What would you like to say?
First of all, I'm going to blame this on Member Pats for his relentless enthusiasm around scooters.
I have the scars to prove I'm an enthusiastic writer.
True. I'd like to note that Nancy Humphrey has been doing a lot of work on this, and we've had this brought to Transportation Committee, I think, twice already, because there are a vast range of different scooter offerings on the market, and almost no two policies from any city are alike on scooters. There, if you looked, there was, I think, a thing attached that showed some of the differences. I have an even bigger one that I got from a consulting firm, there's very little consistency across cities. And one thing that Nancy's done very well is started to talk to Berkeley and Oakland because we are wedged in between them to develop a regionalized approach to a scooter permitting or ordinance process. And I think we should support this work to make sure it's very regionalized, because I don't think we are, I think we will be more effective if we do so. An item for consideration I'd like to add to this list would be sustainability. I understand that some companies like Lime have already tried to go carbon neutral with the charging, is my understanding, but that because of the way many of them are charged, if they're undocked, it does create additional vehicle miles to go around and re-slap on those batteries. And so that's something that I think we should consider, and I know that Lyft has mentioned having docked ones that dock into electric stations. And with their recent acquisition of the GoBikes, I think we should make sure that this fits in with our sustainability as well as our transportation goals.
Okay, thank you. Member Pats?
You know, I do want to thank Member Medina, for all the work she's put into this. You know, I, in looking at this, the rules are scattershot, and I do want to see that we come up with some things. I, like I said before, I'm pretty pro-scooter, I think they're a really great last-mile solution. But they have some, as they've blossomed in Oakland around my work, I've seen the challenges they present, and really want to make sure that we get this right. And so I'm really excited that we're having this conversation, but I think we've got a long way to go.
Okay, Member Martinez?
I just want to echo what my colleagues have said, and not about my excitement, I haven't ridden one of the scooters. I have not spilled blood from a bird.
It's really not as hard as you think.
But I do think we need to, I think we need to align with our neighbors, and I'm not in a rush to get this done. I would like to see this done right. I'm not averse to scooters, but I want to make sure that we're, we're covering all the same bases that our neighbors are.
Scott?
Well, at Transportation Committee, I thought Vice Mayor Medina agreed that they're called adult-use scooters.
Oh, like adult-use marijuana, yeah. No, we agree, that's what we're calling the permit, definitely.
Okay, so we got that straight. I've noted that the.
That's some direction for staff, calling them adult-use scooters.
Member Donahue's turn to entertain us.
I agree, I'm not in a rush. I agree with Councilmember Martinez about this, let's, let's get it right. It just seems to me that the variety, you know, the, the smaller the wheels, the rougher the street, you know, there's, there's all these issues about equipment. If we're going to sanction certain companies, we should, you know, just really look at it. I think that when it comes to safety, maybe the design of the scooters does matter. And I've also seen the problem with cluttering, especially on Piedmont Avenue, where they have a fairly narrow sidewalk, and I've seen a wheelchair user blocked from the lack of enforcement. And so I just don't want this to happen in our town. I want to make sure our wheelchair-bound community isn't going to have an issue with this.
Okay, thank you. My, my comments are, I'm really, I really don't know a lot about them from a policy perspective. I'm for increasing transportation options to people that are green and active, and so this falls into line with those objectives that I have, is to eliminate carbon-based transportation. And I think for me, it's, this is going to be more of a detail issue. I have concerns about the safety of them, and they're, in terms of how they're used, and I have concerns about the path of travel and the conflicts in a city that has often very narrow sidewalks due to old buildings that have no setbacks, and there's very few feet between the curb and the building, and we have tree wells. And so you can walk down Hollis Street, and there's literally three feet between the tree well and the building. In many places in this town, I just am concerned about how we regulate where they can be used. And I know that we can't, you know, hover over people and, and keep them from using them in certain spaces, but I think that's a concern for me. And I think the other thing that I, you know, we have no regulations, and there's two mindsets to, to dealing with municipalities when you're, when you're a private entity and there's no regulations in place. One is, it's not regulated, so we can do it. The other is, we should reach out and talk about how we'd like to work on this. And so I think one of the things I'm interested in is in pursuing potential partnerships with private entities, is who is actually going to respect the fact that this is a highly-trafficked community. There are a lot of transit impacts in this community between the freeway and the train and major arterial roads, including San Pablo, 40th, Powell, and Christie. I have noticed a number of scooters already cropping up on the sidewalks, and so I appreciate Vice Mayor Medina moving quickly to get this, you know, before us for some discussion, because I'm not really excited about, I know that there's the technology to geofence the picking up or dropping off of a scooter outside of an area that doesn't allow it, and there's a piece of me that almost feels like we should come back with an ordinance that prohibits them until we've come up with a plan, simply because I am concerned about them not being regulated and becoming a nuisance to people, and then them actually being viewed as a negative form of transportation. Because I actually think they have a lot of potential, but I think when companies that put them on streets in places that it's not regulated, do it because of the financial opportunity, I think they actually do a disservice to what they're trying to put into the community. So I would just list that as an item for consideration. I feel we should consider a temporary prohibition on them until we have a plan in place so that we can make clear to the private entities that we, we're serious about doing transportation well. As I think was noted earlier, we spent a lot of time doing something that other cities haven't done with a two-way cycle track coming in the future, but at the same time, I think it should be done safely. And so those are my high-level conversation items. And I have items for consideration to discuss. Maybe we can go through that list, and people can add on points as we go through that list? Or did you, anyone wish to add on general discussion first?
I've got some to add on to this.
Go ahead.
Well, I think it would be nice if we can give general direction that we'd like to develop a, a permit or an ordinance in conjunction with Berkeley and Oakland so that we're taking a regionalized approach. Do we all agree on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, that's fair. I think the goal might be tonight is with these considerations to give staff an idea of what kind of, I would hate to develop an agreement with them that we don't support. That's really what I'm trying to, yeah. City Manager?
And for clarification, if they were to be delayed for some reason in those jurisdictions, you would want to wait until they were done? Or you would want to?
I'm not interested in waiting for Oakland.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have other general comments?
I'd like to add sustainability as an item for consideration.
I have it written down for us to discuss. So I'll be, I'll begin with safety. And so staff, this is, and staff and the Vice Mayor, I'm going to lean on you a little bit because you're more experts on this than, than I am for facilitating the conversation. Are we just, when you speak to safety, are you looking for how to regulate safety, like requiring a helmet? Or are we looking for safety like we would allow it on a sidewalk or a road or neither, or a bike lane or neither? What are you thinking about?
Yes, all of the above. No, I, I, I place safety by itself at the top.
Okay.
Merely because it applies in so many of them. The parking requirements and the clear path of travel is a safety issue to a person in a wheelchair. How quickly you're driving and whether you are enforcing the fact that you should not be riding them speedily down the sidewalk is also a safety issue. There's a whole lot of different safety issues embedded in many of these. So I just put that right up at the top as something we should be considering throughout.
Okay, Ally?
I would note that under California law, they have to be not on the sidewalk. That's a California law, and so we should just defer to that. I don't think that we need to consider whether or not they're going to be on the sidewalk, it's not legal. And I think a safety thing that I've seen considered in other jurisdictions is the governing the speed between 12 to 15 miles per hour. Some jurisdictions have lower governance, and as we learned from Navarro's trip to Santa Monica, if you're in a heavily-touristed zone, there's now a rule where in that geofenced area, it governs you down to five miles per hour to try to kick people out of that heavily trafficked area, and they're trying it out right now. So I think governance of speed and minimum, I think, mechanical requirements, Scott had mentioned something about the size of wheels and whatnot, would be maybe the two bigger factors to consider with speed, with safety.
Others? Christian?
I was going to do this under data collection, but one of the things that is true of the scooters is that they require a cell phone and a credit card, and then they say, no minors may ride them. I think that's the policy for at least the three different agencies. And as somebody who works exclusively with minors, that policy is not very strongly enforced. And so I'm just curious, I'd love to see the data around, how often are they suspending users? Because I suspect the suspension of users is really not happening. And so, you know, while I never expect industries to regulate themselves, I would like to at least have the pretense that they're going to do some self-regulation and see that on there. Because for me, it does no good for us to burden our PD citing people for riding it underage, and then the, you know, that's, that's the only consequence, so.
Others on that item?
Yeah, I just, I respond what you're saying. I think that the industry could pretty easily regulate that side of it, it seems to me, and relieve our cities with the burden.
Sort of as a transition to the next question, it was one of the nice things that, that was an added-on feature by the two major competitors in Oakland, is that when you park it now, you take a picture. And so that there's some, you know, there's a, I'm going to call it a paper trail because I'm old. There's digital evidence that it's not just parked in the middle of the sidewalk, you actually, it's very cute how they both phrase it. So the next user can find it, but it's really about, I think, making sure that you're following the parking regulation. So it's, again, it tethers into, if we're going to put parking requirements, you know, and there's the option of painted sidewalks, which defeats the dockless feature. You can paint parking zones. Which defeats the dockless feature, but there is that idea of, again, I go back to data collection, it's data sharing of, you know, what are we doing when we see people, you know, parking it inside Lake Merritt, for example?
Well, let me, let me move to that item, because I think that's a, when I look at the things that we can kind of talk about at a high level, I want to start there. So do people support, as a concept, dockless scooters, or would people like them docked?
Are there docked scooters?
You can require it. I don't know that anyone does it, but you can require that.
I think it kind of defeats the purpose of.
Of using them? So then let me move to the question, so it sounds like that's where folks are. So on the parking requirement, what, I mean, we allow people to park them in the public right-of-way?
So there are some, if you, there are some parking regulations already, they're not allowed to block sidewalks, things like that. But I think setting up a very clear parking requirement, and I don't know how good the GPS on the devices are, I love the idea of a regulator in certain zones, a governor, I think is the term, when it decreases the speed. You know, and, you know, I think of what I do with it, I always park in front of hometown heroes, because I feel like if I park it in front of my house, that defeats the purpose. That's now me taking it, making it personal, and somebody's going to come collect it, whereas a business is going to have other users. And so I wouldn't mind having some zones for parking, some larger areas. And that said, not the person in the room, but their competitor blasted users in Emeryville or users, I think, all over with morning delivery. You can have it parked in front of your house at 8:00 a.m. to take in the morning, which was an interesting sort of service. So however we process that, we need some regulation and guidance around it. And again, they're collecting the data of where these things are parked, and I'd love to make sure that there's a requirement of, not only, we want the parking requirement, but we want some report out of, you know, that would be my thought, is, again, I just don't want to have to deal with people writing scooter tickets.
Well, that last point though, Christian, about the delivery to homes, people are doing, they're doing that to circumvent regulations by basically claiming it's no different than a rental car, but you call us and we come pick you up idea, that you can call for the scooter and it can be yours for the day.
Right.
And so you've rented it essentially, and that's a different service, it's not regulated under a dockless picking up a vehicle at any time if you're choosing, which then is basically, to some people, you know, littering the, the community with.
Yeah.
Vehicles randomly, it's actually, it's a different service that isn't regulated. So that presents a challenge to, which is why I still feel like we should prohibit them from, not from people using them through the community, but they can't be left here. I think. them through the community, but they can't be left here. I think we should consider that in the interim, until we have some agreements about how it's going to work, because, you know, again, I think that it does a disservice to the innovation that they offer for transportation use. The issue up here that says permitting process and fee structure, and the total number of permits and scooters, does anyone have thoughts on that? Ally, do you have thoughts on that?
I mean, I think we should try to make sure our fee structure, someone, that's, again, part of the regional approach. Looking at that, total number of permits, I mean, we're just going to have to size down from our neighbors, but not so significantly, not necessarily proportional to population size. We have a giant daytime population, and so maybe considering our daytime population versus our residential population when looking at the total permit number that we allocate.
Another, another part of that would also be operating hours. So you were talking about the drop-off, or would you want them pulled off the street after a certain timeframe?
My understanding is, right now, you can't use them past dusk. Is that correct? Like, I know, the one app I have shuts down at a certain time at night.
Yeah, there's a certain time of night that, at least Lime scooters are picked up. It typically starts around nighttime, but usually between like seven and nine.
They all get pulled off the streets?
Exactly, yes.
Where do they go?
They're charged by either our team, or our juicers.
And then when you, when you...
Sorry.
That's a good name.
Okay. And then when you put them back out, are they deliberately placed in certain places in the morning?
Yes, and to my knowledge, we don't have any locations in Emeryville proper, that we are, that we're not actively deploying in the city, and we can choose where we actively deploy.
Thank you. Others who have thoughts on the permitting process? Or is that premature? It's on here as a suggestion item for consideration?
Does anyone have concrete ideas, or do we want to see the other cities first?
So I want to give an opportunity to discuss sustainability here, but what I'm, what I'm kind of seeing here is, it looks like it's premature for any of us to give really clear direction. It sounds like what might be best is that these are, maybe we validate that these are the items for consideration tonight, and that we ask staff in working with the neighboring communities to come back with options, as it relates to this, the things that other cities are doing, or have discussed, that we could consider in deciding whether or not we want to share back with them. Maybe staff is like, hey, this is where everything's going. Are you supportive of this list of things, so that we can kind of say, yeah, these nine items are great, but this last thing, we really couldn't live with it, so go back and ask them to tinker with that if we can? Does that seem like, I see the City Attorney wishes to speak.
Right. And so based on the schedule that Andrew had shown in the earlier slide, that depending on the direction given from the council, that schedule may fluctuate then, based on the direction given and the time needed to be able to speak to the, to the appropriate committees?
Right. So in the absence of that, you know, the schedule you've asked, I mean, I just don't know that I'm facilitating a conversation that gets you enough answers to do something in the absence of that. Do you, I mean, if you disagree and you have a list of questions, I'm happy to ask them, but it just feels very nebulous to discuss.
So Mr. Mayor, thank you. We appreciate that it is, it was a little bit nebulous tonight, and we appreciate the council's indulgence in the conversation. This has been helpful. But that schedule, to Mr. Gina's point, we may not be able to meet that schedule. I am feeling a sense of urgency, actually, to bring this forward, to avoid Emeryville having kind of a chaotic situation, which I'm sure the companies don't want, as much as we don't want it. So what we'd like to do is try to move forward with something in collaboration with our sister cities, but not necessarily be bound by that. If we can move a little bit more quickly here in Emeryville, we'd like to do that. It may be that we'll have a couple of rounds with the council. We may need to come to you a couple of times, to your point, Mr. Mayor, that we've got a certain set of things where we've reached consensus, but there may be a couple of policy issues that we'll need some further direction on. But I do feel like we need to move this along a little bit more quickly.
So let me, let me propose something to the council, which is, if we gave staff direction tonight to continue the conversations, but to move forward with the City Manager's well-made point, with something that we could live with, there would be no reason why we couldn't adopt placeholder ordinance, or an ordinance that effectively, in the absence of basically prohibiting it, which is not my preferred way of doing something, we could put, we could put regulations in place. And then if the product of the conversation with Berkeley, Oakland and others yields modifications that could bring us in further alignment with them, we could make those amendments in the future at the timetable that fits what they're doing. Does that sound reasonable, City Manager?
It does to me, Mr. City Attorney, yes.
Council, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. Is there anyone, Diane, do you have any concerns about that?
No, that's fine.
Okay. And then I just want to give some airtime then to the sustainability issue. Did you have context for the, for the staff that you want to give them?
Yeah, I do, I do think that, and I'm happy to share some of the articles that I've been reading, we should consider how much extra vehicle miles we're putting on our roads, by having people go around, collect these, and then charge them. And if it is just the swapping out of the batteries, if that increases or decreases that. And the sustainability programs offered by the different companies is a metric for considering permitting. Something I'd like to look at, because we do have, that is a goal for our city.
That is why she's the Sustainability Committee Chair. Excellent. Okay, are there other comments from council members on this? Staff, do you feel you have direction?
Are we interested, can I ask?
You may ask a question.
Are we interested in doing, you had mentioned that you don't want to do an interim prohibition, which I tend to favor as well, not doing that. Do we want to perhaps say that we could consider current behavior by companies as a metric for allowing them to do a permit?
Absolutely. How does council feel about making it clear that one of the guidance pieces for a permit, even in interim permitting process, is that the current conduct of companies in the city of Emeryville will have bearing on the ability to receive a permit? Do people feel that's okay?
That's good.
Yes. And then I'd like to just take that a step further, which is, anybody who's operating in the city of Emeryville, who I know Public Works has received calls, and there's questions about, you know, piles of scooters in certain locations already, perhaps we could send a friendly worded letter to those companies, advising them that we are taking note of that, and that that will be a consideration we make in the permitting process that we're going to develop. Does that seem reasonable to council?
Yes.
Okay, staff, do you have your direction?
Yes, this has been helpful, and we'll come back to the Transportation Committee in November with some, you know, more consolidated form, but this has been helpful to get a sense of the urgency, or also what your key issues are and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so that closes item 12.4. We'll move to item 12.5, our last agenda item, which is the council discussion on whether to take further action to join the City Possible Network by signing a memorandum of understanding with MasterCard.
And we do have someone for MasterCard here.
Okay. So is there a staff presentation about this item? Is there a brief presentation?
Mr. Mayor, this item came to us from Vice Mayor Medina. We facilitated bringing it forward, so we are actually waiting to hear from her further details on what this program would be.
Okay.
If you would like, if you think it's appropriate, I'd like to invite the representative for MasterCard to kind of present an overview of the program.
You may. If you'd like to speak to us, present to the council about the program and how it works, and take questions, we'd welcome you. And I don't know your name, so please introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you. My name is Eli Brill. I'm part of MasterCard's Enterprise Partnership Group, so we look after global relationships with cities, governments. Miguel Gomino, our EVP, sends his regrets. He could not be here tonight, so I will do my best to channel him in this presentation. So, first of all, I just want to explain to council members that we at MasterCard recognize cities have become the driver for economic growth worldwide, as well as innovation in governments. Half of the world's population now resides in cities, as well as representing 80% of global GDP. We also recognize that cities face a complex set of challenges, from shrinking budgets to aging infrastructure, to the continued rise of economic inequality. And so we're here to let you know that MasterCard is a committed partner in solving those challenges. And to that end, we've established a program called City Possible, which I will take a few minutes to explain, and then get into the specifics of the MOU that we've put forward. So we view City Possible as a new model for public and private partnership. It's really composed of three main components. The first, which we're speaking to you all about, is a global network of cities, private sector partners and academics, working to create the blueprint for the future of cities. And really what that is, is a thought, thought generation platform, to engage in servicing common issues, challenges that cities are facing, and really to engage with kind of like-minded individuals that are trying to solve those challenges. So I think of it kind of as an ideation platform, to understand what cities are really looking at in terms of on the ground, and what's problematic, and what's the opportunities for all of us collectively to sit together and solve those. The second component is around what we call urban co-development centers. So this is taking ideation into actual testing and pilot. We're standing up a set of global labs around the world, and working with cities to design specific programs, and again, pilots that we can actually put into market and test and learn from. And the third kind of side of this is around scaling. So how do you take successful pilots, digital technologies, and actually roll those out, and create the right go-to-market strategy, and the right commercial strategy within this city, within this network of cities, kind of to make it work? So those are the three main components, and I'm happy to talk about, you know, any one of those further. I think in terms of the MOU that we've put forward, so I just want to make a few points on this. It's a non-binding document. There are no commercial terms in this MOU. The only requirement is for the mayor or council to agree to sign the MOU, and a senior staff member, like the vice mayor, CTO, CIO, to agree to participate in the City Possible Network. Participation is through our global virtual forum, as well as industry events, or experiences facilitated by academic partners. Any co-creation or co-development activity pursued with a city will be documented under a separate agreement. This is really just an understanding to go forward with participation in the network. So far, we have 10 cities that have joined. I can't share the names of those yet. We'll be announcing those next month at Barcelona Smart City Expo, with 20 to 30 more in the final stages, like yourselves. And in Barcelona next month, which, you know, we hope to see you at, founding member cities will have the opportunity to display content in the MasterCard activation area, participate in a tech talk or panel, and join the City Possible Workshop on Thursday, November 15th, at which point we will go over the engagement strategy and opportunities for 2019. So with that, I welcome any questions you may have.
Okay, are there questions for members? Member Martinez?
Yeah, can you give us an example of the types of global labs that you'd be considering, and what are the guiding principles behind the work?
Yeah, so, so this program's, I mean, this is new, so we're launching these global labs.
But for example?
For example. So our work in cities goes back probably, you know, eight, 10 years. I think one of the biggest forays for us was into transit, and into introducing contactless payments in transit. So basically allowing citizens, whether that's through tapping a phone, or, or using a mobile, you know, mobile device, or bank cards, to be able to access transit and pay for it in the same way that they pay for retail and groceries, which at the time, in 2012, was pretty novel. We're now working with about 100 cities around the world to kind of roll that out and scale it. London, TFL was the first city to do so, and they're, because of that program, are saving 100 million pounds per year. So we're looking for opportunities like that. I think another smaller example would be work that we've done in Chicago, which is around peak demand management, and being able to use incentives and messaging to shift people off of certain times of travel in transit, which are causing, you know, the most congestion. So we rolled out a pilot with another private partner of ours, private sector partner of ours, and we're able to kind of shift demand by about 18%. So we're looking for concepts like that, that are meaningful to the city. I mean, again, that one, that last example helped save on infrastructure build, you know, and long-term kind of capital expense, right? So those are some of the kinds of ideas. I think generally, what we're looking for is for cities to join and share their open and honest, you know, problem set, right, and be able to help. Rather than us sitting in a room and trying to design solutions in the private sector, being able to actually co-create. So wherever that leads us, and whoever the right partners are to go solve that, I think is where, is where we'll go.
So going down that path, do you have any ideas for potential partnerships here in Emeryville? What, you know, we're a small city, so what?
I'm here to listen, not dictate. But I think we have talked about a few, and, sorry.
Yeah, I can elaborate. I've spoken specifically with Miguel, who's their vice president, is that correct?
EVP.
Yeah, about how parking is a big priority for our city of Emeryville and parking management, and how we're looking at innovative use of technologies for that. That's something I've been sitting on my own ad hoc committee with, and he informed me that parking was a top priority for this program, and finding innovative parking solutions. And they're very interested in doing some pilot programs soon with parking technologies. So that is why I just thought this would be helpful to bring forward. Seems like a timely possible partnership.
Thank you.
Member Donahue, do you have questions?
Well, I, I'm...
If you have comments, I'll come back to them. I just want to give us a chance.
Well, I'm just curious about what our city attorney thinks about this private-public partnership. If there's a potential for some conflicts, I can imagine, of interest, and you know, what about this?
Right. So we did a quick overview of the MOU, and the, we understand that this is a template, and so we haven't negotiated this yet. But there are some issues that we identified, both in terms of potential cost to the city, and then also issues relating to California law. So, and again, I recognize that, you know, this is sort of your standard, and we haven't had a chance to have a meaningful dialogue about it. But there are provisions in the draft agreement that call, under the city contributions, that call for the city to appropriate staff support and staff resources for its contribution to the program. So in terms of, you know, those, those are resources that can be monetized.
Right.
And so we would have to understand what that obligation looks like for us. Also, it calls for us to, you know, articulate actionable goals, provide leadership, that sort of thing. So the cost to, for us to provide those things is also staff time and staff resources that could be monetized. And so the question for the council is, what kind of staff resources do you want to devote to this? There are also some issues about, we haven't had an opportunity to really look about, to look into the reservation of IP rights there. So, you know, that's a pretty big section, and I'm sure that's very, very important to you folks. I don't have enough information or background in IP law to tell you whether or not this should be something that I could recommend to you at this point. And then finally, there's information about confidentiality. So just keep in mind that we are also bound by the California Records Act, a public records act. And so, you know, there have to be accommodation or recognition that, you know, we are bound by those laws as well. So that is, right. And then limitations of liability as well. So those are the initial thoughts that I have to provide right now.
Thank you. Member Pat, do you have questions?
Not at this time.
Member Medina, do you have questions?
No.
I, I had, most of my questions just got answered, so thank you, Member Donahue, because I have a couple of comments, but I'll save them. But most of my questions were just answered. So thank you. We're going to allow the public comment. We may continue the discussion in a moment. So if there are members of the public who wish to comment on this item, they have three minutes to do so. Seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion. And so I'm assuming that tonight, the discussion is just whether to take future action to join the City Possible Network. Since I didn't, my questions were aligned with this. My concern with this is the legal agreement. I know that it says it's a non-binding agreement, but there's actually a subtitle, Roman numeral three, says binding provisions. And my concerns were just illustrated almost verbatim with what the city attorney said. I'm very concerned about the commitment to provide staffing to this, which is a real cost to the city. And we should be mindful that we have a small staff for a city that does a lot of work, and so that is a real cost to this community. Second, I am also not an expert in IP rights, but I flagged that as my number-two thing. It is a substantial portion of this agreement, and it is curious to me what that entails exactly, because regardless of whatever the endeavor or collaboration may be, it's, it's worth looking into. I am concerned about liability at all times, as to how this, who's liable for what parts of this agreement. And so I am, I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think, but I was given a lot of pause when I read this agenda item and this MOU in particular, because it would not be an MOU if we were asked to sign this tonight. I would vote no. So that's where I'm at. So I'll start with Member Pat's on this one.
Yeah, I agree with all the concerns you just raised. I just don't feel like we have enough information at this time. So I think that the question to me is whether or not we spend some staff time looking at this, and I'm comfortable either way.
Okay. Member... Okay. Member Donahue?
Uh, I think that Vice Mayor Medina, in talking to this, I guess the VP of Operations for Mastercard about our parking issue, is excellent, partly because there, Mastercard is in the digital world of how things are paid for, and is, is just so much effort goes into how to regulate behavior around our parking issue coming up, that I could see real potential solutions to how we do parking that could be worked out. And so I, it's an attractive idea to me, but I see the downside of, you know, how the relationship with this private, large corporation, us being a small city, and making sure that, you know, we are not causing more troubles than we'd be solving. So that's, these are my comments.
Okay, Member Martinez?
I, I don't have strong feelings about this, but if we were to move forward with it, I, I would support allowing staff the time to, to redline this MOU, and make it appropriate to our, the level of risk that, that our city attorney would be comfortable with.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, having spoken with the team, I think this presents an interesting opportunity for a public-private partnership. That could potentially get us better access, and maybe a really interesting pilot program for some technology that would benefit our city and our citizens. And, you know, we talked about parking. We also spoke about, I had asked Chad as Economic Development Director what his asks would be before I went into the meeting. He said, well, some sort of help with an app that shows you what's inside all of our arts production businesses. Well, we walk around, they're like, oh, well, we haven't considered that, but maybe we can look at something for that. But parking is already on their list of priorities. And so it seems to me like something that's worth investigating in case we could yield some benefits to our city. Of course, we should be careful with the MOU. I totally agree with that. If it's not going to take a substantial amount of time for city staff to move forward and redline this, and have maybe a couple of follow-up conversations with their team, I'd, I'd like to suggest we move forward at this time, and have city staff consider whether or not this is something that we could safely join.
Okay, my only question, oh, my question is, what is the staff capacity and time and resources necessary to do this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That would be, in addition to the legal issues related to the MOU, my primary concern or consideration is how much staff resources are, they anticipating be allocated, over what period of time? Because one of the things I've learned in the last three weeks and two days is, we have very little redundancy, and excess bandwidth, if any. So I just want to make sure if we're, we're committing that to something, that we are very clear what that is, and what the outcome looks like. So we can do both of those analyses, I think, at the same time.
Yeah, so I'd like to propose a hybrid of what was just said, and what Vice Mayor Medina has proposed, which is, I'm supportive of the request, as she, I think, is about to make a motion there to do this, supportive of the request to examine this, but I'd like the preliminary inquiry to be on those particular details, the staff capacity, the amount of staff investment, and the, what do I, yeah, staffing, I had staffing generally as the thing. So I think that those questions that the city manager just asked are the things that should be threshold questions, and if staff can't recommend moving forward with something because it, it would create a conflict, I think you should just agenda, bring it back and inform us for an update, and we can decide whether to move into a full legal negotiation. Does that seem fair?
That seems very fair.
Okay. So is there, there's a motion with that instruction, or do you?
I will make a motion to move forward with staff, considering this, and what it would take from staff, and whether or not we can come to a legal, an agreement on the MOU, and if we can contribute adequate staff resources or not to this, and what the threshold is, and then bringing back to us an update.
Yep.
And if the update is going to be that they could potentially recommend joining it, then also a resolution or whatever is necessary for that.
That's fine. Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina, and a second by Member Donahue, to move forward with examining this resolution, and making the inquiries stated in the record by Vice Mayor Medina. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. We'll move forward with that item. Thank you. Item 13 is the department head reports. I don't see any planning commission update. Andrew, do you have anything? Ali, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Chief Yoder, no?
No.
Over here, do we have any updates? No, that was fast. Okay, so future agenda item requests. I'll start on my far right. Member Donahue?
Uh, no.
No, Member Martinez?
I have one. So, one, Senate Bill 1383 has come to my attention, whereby we're, localities are going to have to implement and enforce policies that improve organics recycling. This bill was signed into law in 2016, and we are going to have to start implementation in 2022. Enforcement and penalties will begin, and the state is currently in the rulemaking process on this, so I'd like for this to be brought forward in conjunction with our waste hauler contract, which I believe comes up in July of 2019, but it's something that we need to be looking at now, as we're going to have all of these new responsibilities.
Would you please repeat the number, SB what?
SB 1383.
Councilmember, is it 1838?
I thought it was 1838, but I, as I looked it up, well, it's either 1838 or 1383.
The one related to organics processing?
Yes, so it's, it's short-lived climate pollutants, organic waste, and emissions reduction. So, this is as a, yeah, this is, what we're going to have to be looking at is how much organic waste is not getting composted. So what should be going into the green bin that's going into landfill, and we need to start working with our waste hauler to get data, so that we can create a program to make sure that our multifamily residential and our businesses are recycling properly.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping to get some support on that.
Yes, is there support? I'm supportive.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. There's a direction to move forward that in conjunction with the 2019 planning that Member Martinez noted. Christian?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Nope.
I have one, and I wasn't going to do it tonight, but I might as well just do it. I would like to ask if we could schedule for the planning commission to discussion, and then to discuss, and then further at the city council, the potential of revisiting bedroom sizes in the family-friendly guidelines for buildings that are over seven stories tall, that go beyond the two podium and five-stick, as we say, frame construction. With the tariffs that have been placed on steel, there are opportunities to build affordable housing and other housing that could, in the high-height areas of the city, the Christie Corps in particular, there's opportunities there that I am concerned, we won't be able to take advantage of, because the high price of steel, and the labor associated with that, juxtaposed against the flat restrictions we have around bedroom size. I'm just concerned that we need to hybrid that model, and I just wanted to, you want to talk, go ahead.
I believe what you're referring to is unit mix, as opposed to bedroom size.
Yes, thank you, unit mix, thank you.
The developers that I've talked to have said that high-rises become cost prohibitive if they have to have as many three-bedroom units as our regulations require.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm looking at, too, is that due to the costs of doing it, I just, I don't want to get into a discussion of the matter, but I just want to know if folks are willing to let the planning commission consider that in light of the changes in the cost to materials. We're trying to build dense housing in an urban core to make housing more accessible to people. There's spaces allocated to that, and I just am concerned that we, we have a policy that is in place for the right reason, but doesn't match up with current and future trends related to costs.
So, Mr. Mayor, is the scheduling a request to have the planning commission revisit the question of unit mix?
Unit mix, as it, only as it pertains to above, to anything in the California Building Code requires that goes above the wood frame and podium to steel construction buildings.
And that would be the question that you want your, your fellow council members to vote, or to say whether the planning commission should revisit that?
Yes. People okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, as, as luck would have it, we have our first high-rise in many, many years, going to the planning commission for a study session in December. So we can raise that question with them at that time, and then bring it back later for further vetting.
I think that sounds appropriate. I'm glad I asked today. Okay. So with that, there are no future, other future agenda items. Madam Clerk, the time is 9:54. The meeting is adjourned.